Oh, wow. I feel very athletic this morning. August 15th, 2012, meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being video recorded as well as presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2 and are closed captioned for hearing impaired viewers. Please note, some customers of Cox Communication, if you do not have a cable box, may view this on meeting on digital channel 89.5. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, may be viewed on the Internet at www.kclv.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV and the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM, also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 1:00 PM. This building is protected by state of the art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exit at the back of the chambers out to the mezzanine, proceed out the double doors to the terrace, and down the back staircase. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First Street. Employees wearing safety vests or our city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related to the items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you may complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available online in the clerk's office or at the rear of our chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not preclude you from speaking under the public comment, citizen's participation, or specified public hearing items. If there's anyone present today who has need for hearing impaired equipment, please see the city clerk's office. Yeah, excuse me, staff here. If you parked in the parking garage, crossed the street, and did not receive a validation ticker as you entered the chambers, please exit to your right and then see the security personnel at the entrance. Before we proceed with today's agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Reverend Doug Fogelzong, Center for Spiritual Living, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good morning.
Good morning, thank you. And so, this is a great day, a beautiful day, and we close our eyes to take this moment to call forth blessings upon these proceedings, knowing that that divine presence of the infinite Creator of all things guides the way, that that which is said, that which is heard, and that which is decided here today is in the highest and best interest for the great city of Las Vegas, for a thriving and healthy community. I give thanks for these proceedings, I give thanks for these decision makers, and I give thanks for this day, and a special blessing of gratitude and wonderment for those who are recognized and honored here this morning, knowing that these groups and individuals are indeed blessed by their achievements, their accomplishments, and by this day. And so, in gratitude for this proceeding and for all that is done here successfully, I say, "Thank you, God." I let go, and so it is. Blessed be. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Good morning. I've seen him. Oh, no, he's... Well, is he here today? Well, I didn't see him, but maybe he's in a... Oh, yeah, they were loading up his desk. The reason I said that was because I only rode a tricycle in New York City. Okay, are we ready? Yes, we are. Welcome this morning. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to take a moment now, if we could, just a moment of prayer for Bob Forbes, who passed away this past week at the age of 64. An influential teacher, educator, member of the Chamber of Commerce, and just one who gave so much to our community, certainly a leader in the gay and lesbian community, and we've seen so much happen in the acceptance of the group throughout our community. And he was very, very instrumental in making that happen these many years. So, if you would, bow your head just for a moment, please, in remembrance of this wonderful man. Thank you very much. The ceremonial portion of the agenda today, we're going to start with Mayor Protem Anthony, who's going to recognize a special cause and a group of wonderful individuals who are just passing through our city. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. It is my honor this morning to welcome and recognize a group of men and women who represent the Tour of Duty 2012. Why don't you all come down here and give them a nice round of applause? Come on. Okay. All right, thanks for coming down. These men and women are police officers and firefighters from the United States and the country of Australia, and they are going to ride their bicycles across the United States, beginning in San Diego, ending up in New York City, to honor the police officers, firefighters, and public safety personnel who died in the line of duty on September 11th. And they're also riding to honor the military personnel who have died and have been wounded protecting this country. And I am honored to be with these men and women this morning as they kind of begin the second leg of their tour across the United States. And I think we have some video that we can show. Okay, we actually, Tuesday night, Tuesday night, we were on Fremont Street at 10 o'clock. Fremont Street was absolutely packed, and we had a little recognition for these men and women, and the folks on Fremont Street just surrounded them and thanked them. We did a moment of silence for the men and women who died on September 11th. They were also out on the strip, enjoying Clark County. Eventually, they made it to Las Vegas. They actually, they began their tour on August 12th on Monday, beginning at the USS Midway in San Diego, California. They rode that day and made it to Las Vegas where they spent the night. They came down to Fremont Street yesterday. I believe they're out in Ellis Air Force Base, and Lieutenant Wills talked a little bit more about that. And then, they're here this morning to get honored by the Las Vegas City Council and the City of Las Vegas, and they will leave here today and begin their journey across the United States. And some of the places that they're going to visit during the next 29 days are the Murray Federal Building in Oklahoma City, the Flight 93 Crash Site in Shanksville, Pennsylvania, the Fallen Firefighters Memorial in Emmitsburg, Maryland, the National Law Enforcement Officers' Memorial in Washington, DC, the Pentagon Crash Site Memorial in Arlington, Virginia, and the site of the National September 11th Memorial and Museum at the World Trade Center in New York City. That's where they're going to end their journey. And I'm just, you know, God bless these folks for doing this and making us remember the people that put on a uniform every single day to protect us and protect this country, and to remember those who have made the ultimate sacrifice. So, I first like to ask Lieutenant Rob Wills from Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department to just say a couple words about this event.
Thank you again, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Mayor Goodman. Thank you to the council for having us here. This is a great honor. I'd like to say, before I make any more comments, that I feel very honored and privileged to be amongst this group of fire, police, and military officers in this, in our journey across the country, raising awareness and reminding folks that we will never forget the events of 9/11 and the tragedies and the victims of 9/11. That's why we're together, and that's what we're doing. We're making sure that nobody ever forgets that, and we're also honoring the police, military, and fire officers currently working, and those that have ultimately paid the ultimate price in their own tour of duty by sacrificing their own lives to make our countries safe and a safe place to live. So, again, I'm honored to be here and amongst this group of people that we just came together three days ago and finally met face to face. We've all been training for over a year, some of us for over a year, some a little bit less, to be, prepare ourselves for this journey, and we look forward to the adventure across the country. If you'd like to find out a little more about our event, you can go to tourofdutyride.com and check us out along our journey and keep track of us. We'll be updating our cities that we go through along the way. And again, thank you, Mayor, and council, and Mayor Protem for having us here.
Thank you. Also, you know, the great country down under, Australia, is also represented here. Of all the countries in the world, Australia has partnered up with the United States to do this tour. So, I'd like to ask Paul Ritchie, who's a firefighter from Australia, Paul, there you are, why don't you come and say a couple words about your great country?
Great country, yes, thank you. Do you like that? It's a little bit, it's a little bit scratchy with the voice here in Vegas. Mayor Protem, Mayor Goodman, thank you for welcoming us all to your chambers today. Yeah, from an Australian point of view, we're thrilled to be here, and the reception we had the other night was second to none. It's a wonderful place to come and visit Vegas at any time, but to actually come into Vegas and ride with all the police and police officers, and we want to recognize you guys for helping us out. And again, today, when we leave, we really appreciate it. It's a part of our family, our firefighters, military, and police, and we want to recognize that. We really had a great time the other night. That was something special, and I know all the guys here will go away and they'll look at this in Vegas as one of the highlights of the whole trip. So, we want to thank you, and from me on behalf of the team, from an Australian point of view, and our military guys, thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Were you able to find any good Australian beer, or not really? No, no drink. Oh, yeah, right. Okay. Well, on behalf of the mayor and the entire city council, I'd like to present all of you with a certificate of appreciation. Lieutenant Ritchie there. And we also have lapel pins, like the mayor's wearing, for all of you to wear sometime during your ride to represent the city of Las Vegas. So, thank you. God bless all of you. Be safe on your journey, and we look forward to hopefully seeing you somewhere in New York City.
And stay hydrated, yes, and sunscreen?
Okay. So, oh, yeah, let's have a picture. Whoever's doing a picture, come on up here, Mayor.
Okay, let's have all the city council. You may have to go to the next building to do this.
Squeeze, everybody squeeze in.
Come close.
Maybe the sunburn should be better.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good trip. Good luck, good luck. You deserve it, believe me. Absolutely. Have a good ride. Take care. Good luck, everyone. Hey, good luck, have a good trip. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the other night. That was awesome.
It was, okay, good, yeah.
I was like a kid in a can. My eyes were like saucers looking up at the...
Did you get your picture taken with some of the crazy guys down there? Hey, thanks, thanks for coming out. Have a great trip. Absolutely, have a great trip.
Drink, walk, walk. Come back again, okay? Fun to have you. Take care, come back. Have a good time here.
Have a great trip, man. Take care. Have a good trip. All right.
Do we have a City of Las Vegas hat? Where are City of Las Vegas hats? Okay, Mr. Riggelman, hats. City of Las Vegas hats, those are great things to give out. We can do it. Yes, blue with the seal. So, up in the mayor's office, given to us by the leader from Australia, a wonderful coin, his, and then one from this group. It will be in the glass etagere that we have there, always on display, but what a great thing. All right, for our next item, I have the pleasure of announcing the Employee of the Month. I'd like to invite Detention and Enforcement Director, Michelle Freeman, from the great city of New York, but greater city of Las Vegas now for many years, the former city. Well, no, the city's still there, to join us at the podium. Our employees strive to be superheroes in the workplace, meeting our values of action, which stands for achievement, creativity, teamwork, integrity, and ownership. And "now," that's the last letter. I'm proud to announce that the August Employee of the Month is Officer Miguel Chavez. Miguel, please join us. Miguel is a corrections officer with Detention and Enforcement Department, is an excellent example of our diverse team of employees. Miguel's native language of Spanish has made it much easier for our citizens to do business at the city jail. Recently, Miguel completed a Spanish translation of the city's inmate handbook, allowing Hispanic inmates to have a copy of these important rules and procedures in a language which makes it easier for them to understand. Miguel worked closely with the city's graphic artist to complete the translation of the 27-page handbook, and then reduced it to a single, double-sided document. Must be miniscule writing. Teeny tiny. Miguel's work saved the city the cost of having to outsource for translating as well as printing costs. In addition, Miguel works closely with Metro Police and is a part of its Hispanic Citizens Academy that gives Spanish-speaking citizens insight into their police force. He's also worked closely with the Southern Nevada Community Gang Task Force, helping parents to identify signs to look for if they have concerns about their children being affiliated with gangs. Miguel also serves as a member and instructor for the Jail Situational Emergency Response Team. You must never sleep. Miguel is always ready to assist with whatever task is asked of him and complete, and needs to be completed, in detention and enforcement. His efforts truly make our community a much safer place, and we all want to thank him for that. You're sensational. And so, on behalf of the entire city council, it's a pleasure to name Miguel the August 2012 Employee of the Month. Along with the certificate, Miguel has received a $100 Visa gift card, compliments of the Nevada Federal Credit Union, and a donation of $100 will be made to the charity of his choice by SuperPon. He's also received various other awards from the city and the council to recognize his great work, and of course, his name will appear on the street sign in front of City Hall for next month. I'd like to ask Chief Freeman, please, to come forward and say a few words, and then we'll hear from Miguel.
Congratulations. Thank you, Your Honor, council. Well, I'm so proud to be standing here before you today to honor and recognize and to really celebrate Officer Chavez. He's well-deserved of this recognition. He's done a phenomenal job for 10 years. He's eager, he's enthusiastic, he's prideful, and this is just a moment of extreme pride for myself. He really has extended himself. He has no boundaries, not just within the city of Las Vegas and the detention and enforcement, also to other countries. He reaches out to other countries per their request to assist them as well. So, it's my honor and privilege to say thank you very much for a wonderful job and to be enthusiastic for all these years of service. Thank you.
Is your family here?
Yes, ma'am.
Family, are you here? Come on down, please. Beautiful, and how old they are, too.
Good morning, thank, good morning, thank you. I'd like to introduce my wife, Monica, 10 years. My son, Miguel, he just turned seven two weeks ago, and my daughter turns nine tomorrow.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And do you see the sign? Do you want to have a picture taken with the sign for your dad right over there?
It's his name, too, so.
It's his name, too?
Yes.
Of course. How wonderful. We're proud to have you, and thank you. So, if we can, how about the whole family? And chief, you have to go in, too. No? Okay. This is why we have such a great city. It's a wonderful community, and look at these beautiful children. Whose smile is that? I think it's beautiful. And happy birthday tomorrow. My son's birthday is also tomorrow, but he's a little bit older than you. Oh, see how wonderful? You're set for life, and 10 years, good job. Congratulations. For our next item, Councilman Coffin is going to recognize a special lady in a group in our community. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a wonderful organization in Las Vegas called the Mesquite Club. Some of you might know about it. It's over 100 years old. Well, they have a beautiful building over on St. Louis Avenue, not far from my home, in the middle of Ward 3. It's a really sparkling building. It's always well-maintained, and it sets an example for all the neighborhoods, and it has become a real cottage for all of the associations that house in the neighborhoods. They come, and they're greeted, and they're made to feel at home. And a special lady, the manager of the club, is there to greet everyone and work overtime and make sure that they're welcome, that there's water, the coffee's on, and that the people are well-treated and politely received. And her name is Betty Rumford. And I'd like to tell you a little bit about Betty. Of course, she's been with the club a long time, and a member for goodness, many, many years. She was president, in fact, a few years ago. She has initiated a neighborhood outreach chair position, which is, I think, a good example for everybody else. If you're watching and you think about it, if you're part of an organization, maybe you have a building, maybe you have a meeting house, well, right around you, you may or not be aware of it, but there is a neighborhood association of some kind. And if there isn't, we can help you start one. But what it does is helps stabilize your neighborhood. And in Ward 3, this is a big key to help keep things right. The club itself was started in 1911. Can you imagine that? Last year, Mayor Protem and I attended the 100th Anniversary Gathering over at the club, and we had the pleasure of seeing the national president speak. It was Mrs. C.P. Squires who suggested that Mesquite Club become part of the Women's National Leadership Organization, to become the General Federation of Women's Clubs, which it is today. It's the oldest charitable organization in Nevada, to the best of our knowledge, at least in Southern Nevada, because anybody from Reno would probably strike us down if they thought that they had something older than we did. So, here, we're honoring Betty. Betty has been married 54 years to Mert, who's with us today, and also, of course, Marilyn Essex is with us today, who's the director of the club. The mission for this chair was to work with the city of Las Vegas and the neighborhood leaders. So, this is what you do, that we're working for the betterment of the community. In 2008, Betty appointed Joan Lepin as the first neighborhood outreach chair. Since 2009, the president, Betty has served as chair, and Joan as vice chair. Betty's always been concerned about the community around her. I think if you know, if you've attended debates at the Mesquite Club, if you've heard about them, many people have come to these from other parts of town just to see how they're run. They're run wonderfully, and the rules of oil are observed. And believe me, if someone gets out of line, Betty Rumford is the first to get up there and either correct your behavior or take the microphone away from you. So, that little lady has a lot of energy. At the February 28 meeting, Betty was elected to serve on the Board of Secretary for this current year. They have neighborhood meetings throughout the year, and I think that without Betty Rumford and without the Mesquite Club helping, our neighborhood would not be nearly as nice as it is. So, Southridge, Beverly Glen, Hunt Ridge, and John S. Park, all those that orbit around the Mesquite Club are truly lucky to have an organization like Mesquite Club welcoming us in. And I think that now we should welcome Betty to us. Come on up, Betty, and say hi and receive a little proclamation from us.
Hi. First, I want to say thank you so much. It is truly an honor here, and as I told you one time, give us five years and you won't recognize the neighborhood. I tell you, it's amazing people that live in Ward 3. It is truly an honor to work with everyone, and we're a service club. And just give a plug now for our community chair. She's working with the Doris French, all of the Mesquite ladies are working for the betterment of the Doris French Elementary School, and we're raising funds to service with them. And I am so proud to be part of such an organization of the Mesquite Club. These ladies truly care about their community, and all of our meetings is how to make things better, and it has been for 100 years. And I thank you for honoring us for that.
Well, we're delighted. We wanted to make sure that you were honored individually as well as the club. So, let's keep this 100th Anniversary just rolling and rolling and rolling. Betty, for you, we have a little memento, some pictures of Las Vegas, past and present, along with a little reproduction of the proclamation. And also, to take on behalf of the Mesquite Club, a little notice, something to hang up in the club. We'll always have things we can honor the Mesquite Club with. We could never run out of them. We owe you so much. Thank you very much, Betty, and let's see.
Congratulations.
Let's take a picture together, can we all?
Yes. Can I have the director, Marilyn, come up?
Of course. Marilyn, would you like to come up?
Marilyn, come up.
Mert?
This lady has been, this lady has been a mentor to me. She's been, how many years have you been a member in Mesquite Club? Forty-three.
Okay.
Congratulations.
All right, Marilyn Essex is joining us, and Mert Rumford is shyly staying away. He's going to take some photographs. Thank you for being here.
And thank you for all those kind words.
Thank you. Thank you. And Mert, thank you. You're the one that's been taking...
Great work, and of course, his name will appear on the street sign in front of City Hall for next month. I'd like to ask Chief Freeman, please, to come forward and say a few words, and then we'll hear from Miguel.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Your Honor, Counsel. Well, I'm so proud to be standing here before you today to honor and recognize and to really celebrate Officer Chavez. He's well-deserved of this recognition. He's done a phenomenal job for 10 years. He's eager, he's enthusiastic, he's prideful, and this is just a moment of extreme pride for myself. He really has extended himself. He has no boundaries, not just within the city of Las Vegas and detention enforcement, also to other countries. He reaches out to other countries per their request to assist them as well. So it's my honor and privilege to say thank you very much for a wonderful job and to be enthusiastic for all these years of service. Thank you.
Is your family here?
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me. Family, are you here? Come on down, please. And you want to introduce family?
Yes.
Okay. Beautiful, and how old they are, too.
Good morning. Good morning, thank you. I'd like to introduce my wife Monica, 10 years. My son Miguel, he just turned seven two weeks ago, and my daughter turns nine tomorrow.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
And do you see the sign? Do you want to have a picture taken with the sign for your dad right over there?
It's his name, too, so.
It's his name, too?
Yes.
Of course. Wow, how wonderful. We're proud to have you, and thank you. So if we can, how about the whole family? And Chief, you have to go in, too. No? Okay. This is why we have such a great city. It's a wonderful community, and look at these beautiful children. Whose smile is that? I think it's beautiful. And happy birthday tomorrow. My son's birthday is also tomorrow, but he's a little bit older than you. Oh, see how wonderful? You're set for life, and 10 years, good job. Congratulations. For our next item, Councilman Coffin is going to recognize a special lady in a group in our community. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a wonderful organization in Las Vegas called the Mesquite Club. Some of you might know about it. It's over 100 years old. Well, they have a beautiful building over on St. Louis Avenue, not far from my home in the middle of Ward Three. It's a really sparkling building. It's always well-maintained, and it sets an example for all the neighborhoods, and it has become a real cottage for all of the associations that house in the neighborhoods. They come and they're greeted, and they're made to feel at home. And a special lady, the manager of the club, is there to greet everyone and work overtime and make sure that they're welcome, that there's water, the coffee's on, and that the people are well-treated and politely received. And her name is Betty Rumford. And I'd like to tell you a little bit about Betty. Of course, she's been with the club a long time, and a member for goodness, many, many years. She was president, in fact, a few years ago. She has initiated a neighborhood outreach chair position, which is, I think, a good example for everybody else. If you're watching and you think about it, if you're part of an organization, maybe you have a building, maybe you have a meeting house. Well, right around you, you may or not be aware of it, but there is a neighborhood association of some kind. And if there isn't, we can help you start one. But what it does is helps stabilize your neighborhood. And in Ward Three, this is a big key to help keep things right. The club itself was started in 1911. Can you imagine that? Last year, Mayor Protem and I attended the 100th anniversary gathering over at the club, and we had the pleasure of seeing the National President speak. It was Mrs. C.P. Squires who suggested that Mesquite Club become part of the Women's National Leadership Organization, to become the General Federation of Women's Clubs, which it is today. It's the oldest charitable organization in Nevada, to the best of our knowledge, at least in southern Nevada, because anybody from Reno would probably strike us down if they thought that they had something older than we did. So here, we're honoring Betty. Betty has been married 54 years to Mert, who's with us today, and also, of course, Marilyn Essex is with us today, who's the director of the club. The mission for this chair was to work with the city of Las Vegas and the neighborhood leaders. So this is what you do, that we're working for the betterment of the community. In 2008, Betty appointed Joan Lepin as the first neighborhood outreach chair. Since 2009, the president, Betty has served as chair, and Joan as vice chair. Betty's always been concerned about the community around her. I think if you know, if you've attended debates at the Mesquite Club, if you've heard about them, many people have come to these from other parts of town just to see how they're run. They're run wonderfully, and the rules of oil are observed. And believe me, if someone gets out of line, Betty Rumford is the first to get up there and either correct your behavior or take the microphone away from you. So that little lady has a lot of energy. At the February 28 meeting, Betty was elected to serve on the board of secretary for this current year. They have neighborhood meetings throughout the year, and I think that without Betty Rumford and without the Mesquite Club helping, our neighborhood would not be nearly as nice as it is. So Southridge, Beverly Glen, Hunt Ridge, and John S. Park, all those that orbit around the Mesquite Club are truly lucky to have an organization like Mesquite Club welcoming us in. And I think that now we should welcome Betty to us. Come on up, Betty, and say hi and receive a little proclamation from us.
Hi. Would you like to say a couple of words on behalf of the club? First, I want to say thank you so much. It is truly an honor here, and as I told you one time, give us five years and you won't recognize the neighborhood. I tell you, it's amazing people that live in Ward Three. It is truly an honor to work with everyone, and we're a service club. And just give a plug now for our community chair. She's working with the Doris French. All of the Mesquite ladies are working for the betterment of the Doris French Elementary School, and we're raising funds to service with them. And I am so proud to be part of such an organization of the Mesquite Club. These ladies truly care about their community, and all of our meetings is how to make things better, and it has been for 100 years. And I thank you for honoring us for that.
Well, we're delighted. We wanted to make sure that you were honored individually as well as the club. So let's keep this 100th anniversary just rolling and rolling and rolling. Betty, for you, we have a little memento, some pictures of Las Vegas, past and present, along with a little reproduction of the proclamation. And also, to take on behalf of the Mesquite Club, a little notice, something to hang up in the club. We'll always have things we can honor the Mesquite Club with. We could never run out of them. We owe you so much. Thank you very much, Betty, and let's see.
Congratulations, and thank you for all of your work.
Let's take a picture together, can we all?
Yes. Can I have the director, Marilyn, come up?
Of course. Marilyn, would you like to come up?
Marilyn, come up.
Mert?
This lady has been a mentor to me. She's been, how many years have you been a member in Mesquite Club? Forty-three. Forty-three.
Okay.
Congratulations. Thank you for what you've done.
All right, Marilyn Essex is joining us, and Mert Rumford is shyly staying away. He's going to take some photographs.
And thank you for all those kind words.
And Mert, thank you. You're the one that's been taking care of her, so that's beautiful. We appreciate it. Got us beat. Fifty-four years, that's pretty good to tolerate each other. Anyway, moving on. For our final two items, Councilman Barlow is going to recognize the charitable work of a national restaurant chain in southern Nevada and the accomplishments of some young athletes. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning, everyone. I want to know if Jacob Boucher, is that how you pronounce it? Okay, please come forward, Jacob, and Oscar Villasuerte. Did I? Oh, he said a little bit, okay. And what about Kathy Bingham? Is Kathy here? Okay, come on up, Kathy. Ladies and gentlemen, it is my privilege to bring these wonderful individuals forward here before the council and before you. The collaboration of a great partnership between Westview Services and the Las Vegas Olive Garden Restaurants. A couple, I would say, all of the restaurants Olive Gardens, right? Or just a few? All of the Olive Garden restaurants throughout Las Vegas. Westview is a nonprofit organization that provides supportive employment to individuals with mental handicaps and/or physical handicaps, which might otherwise hinder their success and competitive employment. Westview has secured agreements with all the Olive Gardens in Las Vegas and the Two Yard House locations in Las Vegas to sanitize and roll the silverware. Aside from their enclave of positions at the restaurants, Westview also has janitorial jobs available. Every job site service has one or two job coaches, which are Westview employees. The job coaches supervise the individuals as they work and assist in sanitizing and rolling silverware to meet each restaurant's quota. Westview has operated in Nevada for more than nine years and pays the individuals an hourly wage based on their productivity. The more productive the individual is, the higher the wage per hour, which is great. There is no limit to how much these individuals can earn. Further, specifically for the Olive Garden at Cheyenne and Rainbow, which Mayor Protem and I share, the Westview enclave has produced up to 1,300 rolls of silverware sets in paper and/or cloth napkins a day. There are a total of six individuals whom work at this location, and four of which whom live in Ward Five. The group works from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. seven days a week. Most of the individuals work five days a week. Some may want to work an extra day, and it is possible if it's permitted. The majority of the group arrives by paratransit and are picked up, of course, by paratransit as well. The two job coaches are responsible for the individuals from the time they arrive to the time they are dropped off by paratransit. The Olive Garden on Cheyenne and Rainbow has employed Westview workers since 2004. That's eight years of commitment, and so for that, I really want to thank and give a round of applause to Olive Garden for your great work in the community. Thank you all so very much. So I am very proud to share in this partnership that has been secured by Westview as well of Olive Garden, and I would like to also challenge any other related business to join this venture with Westview Services in order to widen the opportunity to others in need. So at this time, I will ask that Kathy, please come forward on behalf of Westview. And who would be the spokesman on behalf of Olive Garden? You do that? Okay, so Kathy, please share with us a few words, if you will, please.
First, I'd like to start by thanking Olive Garden for all the help that they've given our individuals that work for us and all the council members and the mayor for this honor presented to Olive Garden. Westview is a nonprofit organization, and we do provide people with an opportunity to learn how to work and provide them with a place to work. And I am very honored to have Olive Garden amongst our employers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. Thank you.
Well, on behalf of the Olive Gardens here in Las Vegas and ours on Cheyenne, we'd like to thank Westview, and we look forward to working with them for a long time in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And at this time, I would like to present on behalf of the mayor and the entire Las Vegas City Council, in great recognition of the Olive Gardens' commitment to employees of Westview, we, the mayor and members of the Las Vegas City Council, do hereby proudly proclaim August 15, 2012, the Olive Garden Day in the city of Las Vegas. All right? And if you would just please just share a few words.
Thank you so much. We're very proud, and this is a beautiful day, definitely. We just wanted to say that we believe in paying it forward, and thank you for, Westview, for your service, and we just believe that that's the way to do it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so very much. And today only, ladies and gentlemen, all of the Olive Gardens throughout Las Vegas will be giving out free breadsticks when you come into the restaurant. So thank you all so very much. Congratulations. Thank you so very much. All right, you want to get a group photo? We'll get a group photo with the council.
Okay. Come right here.
All right.
Thank you.
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 That is a great partnership. I love partnerships and collaborations, specifically with the private sector and the community coming together to make this community a better place for all of us. In addition to that, ladies and gentlemen, this morning, I have the opportunity to recognize one of the most outstanding 12-year-old club baseball teams in Las Vegas and America. Let's give them a round of applause. At this time, before I provide them with their accolades, I would like to ask that Ryan Avila come forward. Is Ryan here? Let's give him, Ryan, come forward. J.D. Brooks. Steven Giotti, he's not here. Let's give him a round of applause in his absence. Izzy Gutierrez. Ricky Guzman. Christian Lamar. I understand he moved to Florida, so let's give him a round of applause in his absence. Ryan Marino. David Rodarte. Caesar Sedano Jr. Jack Selinger. Dante Williams. And ladies and gentlemen, Dante is the son of Harry and Cheryl Williams, who are here today. Please stand. Harry is my neighborhood planner. Please stand. Cheryl, you stand up, too. Good to see you. Coach Caesar Sedano. And Coach Justin Brooks, please come forward. Caesar? Okay, come. Justin was unable to make it? Okay, well, great. Ladies and gentlemen, the Las Vegas Hawks Baseball Club is a nonprofit youth baseball organization in the state of Nevada that is entering into their ninth season. The organization has developed five teams this year from the ages of eight through 13, which equates to approximately 70 youth players and families throughout the Las Vegas community. The primary objective of the Hawks Club is the advancement of fundamental baseball skills in an environment that fosters good citizenship, character, community, goodwill, and competitive athletics. This past year, the Hawks organization spent time giving back to the community by partnering with the Police Athletic League and other organizations to provide baseball clinics. The club also hosted a baseball tournament that supports the Toys for Tots Drive. Today, it gives me great pleasure to recognize the 12-year-old Hawks for outstanding achievement on and off the field. The Hawks just returned from a week-long tournament in Cooperstown, New York, competing in the Cooperstown Dreams Park Tournament of Champions. The Hawks competed against 104 teams from across the United States and Canada. During this week, the Hawks compiled an outstanding 11-0 record and beat the Viper Baseball Academy from Alabama 10-3. Let's give them a round of applause for that. Right in Cooperstown Dreams Park Championship. During the week, the Hawks also broke the team around-the-horn record that stood for more than seven years, completing the around-the-horn obstacle in 19.91 seconds. So Caesar, I want you to explain to us what the around-the-horn really is when I give you the microphone. The Hawks tied a record by giving up a total of seven runs during the entire tournament and turned an ESPN Top 10 Triple Play. That's huge. Let's give them a round of applause for that. That's national recognition. And before I provide you with your certificate, Caesar, please share with us the experience working with the young boys. Of course, it wouldn't be possible without supportive parents and a great coach such as yourself, and so please share with us the experience in winning this championship.
And also, talk to us about this around-the-horn.
Okay, I would like to thank council, and a special thanks to Councilman Barlow, Mayor Protem Anthony, and Mayor Goodman for the opportunity to acknowledge these young men for their accomplishment. It has truly been an honor to coach these boys. These boys are outstanding individuals, both on and off the field. You wouldn't think, when you see them, that they're a threat, but when they get out on the field, they're serious business. They go out there and play really, really hard. So I really want to thank everybody for acknowledging them and recognizing their accomplishments. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, now, around-the-horn. Around-the-horn is the competition, the skill competitions that they pretty much commenced the entire tournament. It began with a player standing on the mound, throwing the ball to the catcher. The catcher then throws it to third base. Third base then throws it to the second baseman that's standing on second base. The second baseman throws it to first. The first baseman then throws it home. The catcher then throws it to the shortstop that's standing on second base. The shortstop then throws it to right field. Right fielder then throws it back to second. Second baseman then throws it to center field. The center fielder then throws the ball to the third baseman that's standing on third base, who then throws it to left field, and with the last final throw being from the left fielder all the way home to end the clock at home plate. Nineteen seconds.
Nineteen seconds.
So it was very quick.
Twelve-year-olds.
Twelve-year-olds, so the transfer was very important. The boys did set an all-time record. It's the lowest ever for Cooperstown, any time under 20.
Question. What was the triple play? Where was it hit and where did it go from where to where?
The triple play came, and I believe, game six, when we were actually struggling in that inning. We had bases loaded, no outs, and the ball got hit to the shortstop, I believe. It was a shortstop? Shortstop, who caught the ball in the air, stepped on second base, and made a rocket shot to first base to get the out at first base. So to get us out of an inning that we were struggling in.
Head job taken.
Thank you, ma'am.
That is wonderful. And to these young men, you all are to be commended, and of course, bringing home the championship trophies is just amazing.
Kendrick, you might tell them that you watch them on television.
We'll do that as well. We do have certificates for each one of you young men, and the coach want to say one more thing.
One of the other things that I'd like to acknowledge the boys, because the boys have actually played since they've been gone with other teams and helped out other teams, but we have two boys who just returned from representing Nevada in San Bernardino for the Little League World Series with Cheyenne Little League. So those two boys were here. So that just goes to show where these boys are helping out in the community all over.
None of this would be possible, Coach, without supportive parents, so I know that the parents are here in the audience. Would all parents of the young men please stand? And also, if you have a spouse or a significant other, would you please stand as well? All parents and supportive family members. Thank you all so very much for what you all do to support these young men. Thank you so very much. So the time that we're all here for, in recognition of the Las Vegas Hawks Baseball Club and their exceptional 2011-2012 season, and beliefs and inclusions of all players regardless of status, we, the mayor members of the Las Vegas City Council, urge all citizens to join with us as we hereby take great pride in proclaiming August 15, 2012, the Las Vegas Hawks Day in the city of Las Vegas. Congratulations. So if we can get all of the boys, we can have you guys over here hold up the trophy. Come, you can hold up the trophy and come close, and then all the boys come in tighter. We're going to take a group shot. Don't put the trophy in front of your face. We want to make sure we see your face. Come on in, mayor and council. And we have a certificate for each one of your, you can turn that around that way, for each one of your players. All right? Here we go. And also, parents as well as youth, the rebroadcast of this ceremonial will basically go on for the next two weeks until the next city council meeting takes place. And that is when, David?
Three weeks.
Up to September 5th. So you have an opportunity to go online to www.lasvegasnevada.gov, and you can basically go from there with KCOV on the link, and you can record this or basically keep it for keepsake. All right? Channel two. Thank you all so very much. Congratulations. Good deal. Congratulations, guys. Congratulations. Make sure everyone get their certificate, okay? Congratulations. All right? Thank you.
And just in closing, I got a text from the wife reminding me to thank everybody, especially the parents. And two of the coaches that weren't here, they've been a big part of this team, is Justin Brooks and Brad Meloff. He's helping these boys reach their ultimate potential. And for the players that weren't here, Giotti and those guys, they're a big part of this team, and we just wanted to thank them all.
Wait, 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 wait. Where's your wife? Would you please stand up, you smart lady? What's her name?
Stacy.
Stacy, you're right on. That's why it all works. Guys, make sure you know who to thank here. Your coach is great, but there's something going on right there. Congratulations. We are so proud of you. These are beautiful. Congratulations. Thank you. You over-married, Coach. Okay, that will conclude, I believe, our ceremonial portion, and we will recess. It's about 12 minutes of 10. We will recess till 10 o'clock. Thank you. It's all junk. This goes back to Dave. Cute kids. Yeah. I do think, do we have had some?
And two of the coaches that weren't here, they've been a big part of this team, is Justin Brooks and Brad Meloff. He's helping these boys reach their ultimate potential. And for the players that weren't here, Giotti and those guys, they're a big part of this team, and we just wanted to thank them all.
Wait, 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 wait. Where's your wife? Would you please stand up, you smart lady? What's her name?
Stacy.
Stacy, you're right on. That's why it all works. Guys, make sure you know who to thank here. Your coach is great, but there's something going on right there. Congratulations. We are so proud of you. These are beautiful. Congratulations. Thank you. You over-married, Coach. Okay, that will conclude, I believe, our ceremonial portion. And we will recess. It's about 12 minutes of 10. We will recess till 10 o'clock. Thank you. It's all junk. This goes back to Dave. Cute kids. I do think, do we have had some? Okay, we are ending recess at 10 o'clock and ready to go. Anybody else with public comment speaker cards? Please turn them in to Ms. Bridges right up front here. And public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is going to be allowed may be limited, in fact, will be limited to a minute. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items on the agenda. If anyone submitted a speaker card or who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. As I said, we will set the time limit at one minute. We have Brian McAnallan.
There we go. Brian McAnallan, Vice President of Government Affairs with the Las Vegas Chamber of Commerce. We wanted to come down and address item number 48 on your agenda today, the redevelopment area number two. We wanted to go on the record and make sure that the council knew that the Las Vegas Chamber of Commerce appreciates what the city is attempting to do in revitalizing the areas of Decatur, Sahara, and West Charleston. We have heard from several of our businesses who have had some outreach from the city on this issue, and they're encouraged and they would like to see anything that can be done to improve those corridor areas. At the same time, we are hopeful that in -- as you go forward with this, there will be extra outreach and communication with some of those businesses that aren't necessarily owner-occupied businesses. I know that there's been a requirement to reach out to the business owners, and sometimes that always doesn't trickle down to the leaseholders and the businesses in those areas. We would hope that as you go forward that that will be done so that we can educate the community and get them involved in this. We are a little concerned about the business impact statement as it was drafted, and there's lots of questions with regard to that, item number one, two, and three. And many of those issues listed say none identified or not applicable. We would hope that in the future, as business impact statements are drafted by the city, that there's more analysis and explanation in there so that the businesses can truly understand both the benefits and the negative impacts.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. On item number 42?
Excuse me, could you repeat the number you're speaking to?
Yes, on item number 42.
Thank you.
This person is in recovery. And if you're in a recovery program, there's an ongoing and a maintenance part of that which a person has a sponsor, and that sponsor is with the person 247365. And I would like to hear from the person's sponsor, what the sponsor of this person has to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under this public comment portion? Hearing none, we will move on to item number 11. Business. For possible action, any items from this morning's session that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, tabled, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Councilman Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 28, non-restricted gaming limited license subject to approval by the Nevada Gaming Commission. Nevada Restaurant Services at Food for Less 516120 South Rainbow Boulevard. Staff has asked this to be stricken. Item number 41, review of conditions on a reflexology establishment license. Liming Jing doing business at Superior Reflexology 2221 Paradise Road. Applicant has asked this be obeyed till September 5, 2012. Item number 42, appeal to work hard denial for Robert Majanski at Cheyenne Saloon. Staff has asked this be obeyed till September 5, 2012. And item number 52, bill number 2012-37. Staff has asked this to be obeyed till September 5, 2012, and that is my motion.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item 12, agenda item. For possible action to approve final minutes by reference to the special city council meeting of July 25, 2012, and of the regular city council meeting of August 1, 2012. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Please.
So moved.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. And items 13 through 40, without number 28, which has been stricken, on the consent agenda are considered to be routine or recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items the council wishes to bring forward?
I had read in the paper that we were considering selling some of our land for a school, and I just wondered, is that on the consent agenda? The paper said it was.
Yeah.
Could you tell me what number it is?
What number is that, please?
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Where am I?
Scott Adams.
Oh, hello.
It would be items number 25 and 40, and that would be the sale of property on 9th Street that we commonly know as the Downtown Senior Service Center.
Okay. Do you want to bring those forward?
I would like to bring those forward, please.
Okay. Items 25 and 40 will be brought forward. Any other items from council? Okay, hearing none, may I have a motion that we accept the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda items 13 through 40, except for 28 and 25 and 40.
Thank you very much. There's a motion, please vote. Thank you. Councilman Barlow, you did not wish to vote on that?
No.
He did vote in the affirmative?
It didn't show up on the screen. Do you want it in the affirmative on the record?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item number 25. And Councilman, do you -- Councilwoman, do you want to address that, please?
Article that I read in the newspaper. This is to sell property which would be utilized to build a school. Is that correct?
That's correct. Items 25 and 40 are -- item 25 is a purchase and sale agreement respecting the sale of the property on 9th Street that we know as the Downtown Senior Service Center. Item 40 is the consent resolution that is what we commonly refer to as the AB 312 Resolution, which makes a finding that the sale of that property is consistent with an economic development or redevelopment exemption. This property was one of several that we issued a request for proposal for. We received proposals, sorted through those, and a couple of the others have already been disposed of under lease, the Rafael Rivera Center and the former museum at Lorenzi. This is the remaining parcel that was part of that batch of properties that was RFP'd. An offer was made by the Downtown Project to purchase the property at $1.5 million, and it's their intent to go forward with development of the property as an early childhood learning center. There are representatives of the Downtown Project.
My question wasn't so much on selling it to them for that purpose. I'm just wondering if they have looked at -- I mean, my understanding is that there might be a need for more space. Are we doing anything with the Downtown Senior Services? What was the other group, the legal?
Senior Legal.
Senior Legal. I mean, those -- haven't we made some commitments to them as to that they can stay there?
Yes.
And if they do stay there, does that give enough room for what the development is supposed to be? The reason why I ask this is because I've been in education, and I'm also on the health board, which goes through everything that's related to putting in a school. And you know, if you have children that are infants, you need certain things for that level of a school. If you have children then who are toddlers, you have certain needs for those. In other words, it's the bathrooms, it's the changing tables, and I'm just wondering, have they developed a plan for that amount of property so that they know that it will fit in there? That was my only question. Do you have a plan that considers every need and every regulation of the Health Department?
I think rather than answer the question on behalf of the buyer, I think it might be best to let the buyer answer that question. It's my understanding that they -- their intent is to allow the existing tenants in that building to remain for up to five years. That provides for a reasonable transition period for those tenants to identify other places and then move into another location at the end of that five years. places and then move into another location at the end of that five-year period. It's also just intuitively would allow their plans for the early childhood center to grow into that space at the end of that five years. So initially, they may have a need, but I think over time, they'll be able to eventually grow into the rest of the building. Todd Kessler is here representing Resort Properties Group and the Downtown Project. He may have a more specific answer to that question.
Yes. Good morning. I have many answers, so I can answer your questions, but you know, we've been studying that site for a long time. We've brought in some incredible.
Excuse me, I can't hear.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Todd Kessler, three thirty, sorry, three hundred North Las Vegas Boulevard, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight nine one oh one. Happy to answer all your questions, and good morning. We've had, we've been studying this site for a long time, the purchase-sale agreement process and the RFP process has been over a year now. In that time, we've brought in some very internationally acclaimed early childhood development center architects, and we've created what we believe not yet finalized to be a very incredible site plan and floor plan. And we have a lot of square footage there now. There's, just so you're aware, there's eleven thousand, over eleven or twelve thousand square feet of space that's empty at this moment in time. As Mr. Adams indicated, part of RFP proposal response was we indicated that the tenants could stay, remain for five years. Additionally, we offered them free rent to stay for five years. That's the other kicker that I just want to make sure is open and known.
So you're giving them free rent for five years and with the knowledge that they will, they need to move in five years, if they have to move? Okay, that's, that's all right.
And then to answer your questions as it relates specifically to the school, we've done a lot of studies, there's, you know, there's a lot of professionals, I should say, that are much more knowledgeable about how to design and develop a early childhood center, and those folks are working diligently to come up with that plan in five months.
And I'm sure you have great architects. My concern is only because I've seen problems occur in the past, that there are international architects who can be the greatest, that may not know all the rules and regulations of the Health Department and this department and that department. And I would, I just would hate to see you get into there and maybe want to move up another level and not be able to do that. That's my concern.
Sure. And let me just say.
Maybe you could match, you could check the health regulations as far as that's concerned.
There's also a local architect, I should say, who does all of that kind of work. He's also an architect that's developed some downtown schools. We're not in contract yet, so I don't want to indicate who that is, but there is definitely a local architect presence who has all the knowledge base as it relates to R codes as for infants, toddlers, pre-K, first grade, et cetera. These folks have built dozens and dozens of those schools here in town, so.
Okay, that's fine. If that, I'm, my only concern was to bring this forward and that you all be aware. I was, I was on the school board for many years. I will tell you, we had many great architects here that worked on our schools, and we had problems. And problems are because we don't communicate between our governmental entities. And I've seen many times when schools were held up, or another preschool was held up because of a bathroom issue, or we even had businesses held up because you need two bathrooms instead of one, nobody realized, and so forth. So if you feel safe and you can do this, I will say that I'm warning you about that, and I would think that you'd make sure they check every rule and regulation. Most people don't understand the differences that are involved in working with the babies, in working with the preschoolers, and then working with older children, and about the space that's needed. Then secondly, that was only why I was doing that, but secondly, did you ever consider maybe working with the city in helping one of our special needs groups and having them be there? For example, since you're taking infants on up, we have a great need for a school for the hearing impaired. We have fantastic nationally-ranked teachers that are helping these parents now, and you might just want to consider that because the types of education that you mentioned are types that are used in educating the hearing impaired. So I wondered if you might want to consider that.
Absolutely. We'll take the opportunity to sit down with you, our educational specialists, and talk a bit further.
That'd be great. That'd be great. Thank you.
Is, Councilman, just one second, if I may ask a question. Is this conditional on the state approval for having a school there or for the, it is not?
No, no, it's not. There is one conditional approval, and that is the zoning change from civic to get it out of the civic zone. That's on the agenda today as well.
Okay, and, but if in fact, for some reason, the school, this is not conditional to there being a school, you are just wanting to buy it outright?
Correct.
For whatever purpose at this point, it's a school.
It's a community-based asset, is how we view it.
Okay, because I always know the media gets things a little bit confused, so I don't always believe a hundred percent what I'm reading. Councilman Coffin.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason I asked for this to be taken off of consent and put into discussion were, I suppose, elements of pride, too, because what's happened is, we have a situation where we got a beautiful old church downtown. A lot of people will drive by it and they forget, because they are on Carson all the time, they forget that that's kind of an anchoring point for part of East Fremont, if you will, the neighborhood. That church has been there a long time. It's an elegant structure, and if you read the contract, recital three on the second page illustrates a major point of this contract, and we're so happy that the buyers agreed to this. In essence, it's a non-demolishing agreement perpetually. They can't take it down. And that's important because it's one of the best-looking buildings in Las Vegas, going to stay there. So we're very grateful that the, the buyers have agreed to that, and I'm very grateful for our staff negotiating that, the hard-nosed negotiators that they are. Of course, there was, that helps explain why you don't have the very highest price, because someone would think, well, it shows on the documents, it's less than fair market value. And it is a little less. It's a few hundred thousand less, I think. I'll ask Scott to be exact on that, based on those older appraisals. But the thing is, is why are you below market value? Well, now you can't build a hotel. You can't do a lot of things. But I'd like to turn it over, Mayor, to Scott, if I could ask him to illuminate why we're selling it below fair market value.
Sure, please.
Councilman, I'd be glad to answer that question. Let me just address for the record that there is a provision in Exhibit F of the, the purchase agreement, which is a grant, bargain, and sale deed that does place a restrictive covenant on the property that prohibits demolition of the, of the premise. So I would refer you to that, that provision in the agreement. But as, as, as the councilman indicated, when we, we sell real estate, under state law, we're obligated to sell either by auction at the highest of two appraisals. If we depart from that, we have to make an exemption for redevelopment or economic development purposes. We're doing that in item number forty on your agenda, and we're doing that in several different ways. We've recognized that they are keeping their tenants in place for up to five years. Most of those tenants are either at low or no rent. If you evaluate that, that assistance, that community benefit to those tenants, that is in the range of somewhere between four and eight hundred thousand dollars annually, I mean, over that five-year period, depending on what rent, market rent you were to use to make that calculation. I think the other thing that we mentioned is that, the other way we reconcile that difference is they are providing a community service on-site. They would be providing an early learning childhood center that does reinforce and support redevelopment in downtown. And then thirdly, there is the recognition that that restrictive covenant preventing demolition does diminish value somewhat. It's hard to calculate, but there would be a diminishment of value. It wasn't considered in the appraisal, but we can consider that in the, the resolution of finding. And so for those reasons, the free rent, the community service provided on-site, and, the historic nature and the restrictive covenant for demolition, that reconciles the difference between high appraisal and low. The range of appraisals was one million four hundred and seventy thousand, one million eight hundred thousand. We're selling at one point five million, so we have to reconcile a difference of about three hundred thousand dollars.
Mr. Adams, if in fact, there's a desire on the part of the owner for whatever reason, for expansion, alteration to the building structure from the exterior appearance, is that possible, or is it protected under what's been agreed?
It is. We simply placed a covenant against demolition. We're not hearing from them that they are planning any radical changes to the exterior of the building. I would expect what they are going to do mostly is work on the inside to reconfigure to accommodate the early learning center. So we, we were more concerned about the issue of, could they tear the building down? That there's a historic resource there that we needed to preserve.
Okay, thank you. Because I know, having built this school from scratch, there are restrictions for the number of students and the size of the rooms in which you may house those students. So there are a lot of constraints on what you're able to do, aside from the fire code and health code and every other code that you have to deal with. So just, I just wanted to be sure, because as in fact you expand, I'm assuming you're going to be very successful, the exterior at this point, it's just total demolition we're talking about.
That's correct.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, please.
Now, when we say restricted on this property, this isn't restricted as in the term that when we had Billy Walters and the golf course, and he wanted to build things next to the sewage treatment plant and get out of that. This is something that stays with it? Because remember, he came back, and then it could have been voted out. In fact, I think it was, and then voted back in.
Let me, let me read the actual provisions, just so you'll understand and we get on the record, that's in the grant, sale, and bargain deed. It says, "The conveyance of the property is subject to a restrictive covenant that the existing building on the property will not be demolished without the prior written consent of grantor, which may be granted or withheld at the grantor's sole discretion."
That would be the city council?
Yeah, that's correct. So we, we retain the sole right to approve or disapprove any demolition of that property.
I think that's what we had on the golf course, too. But first, I would also, we did, just to show you what happens, it's not that I'm beginning to sort of question a lot of things, but I am. I also want to say, however, I really respect what you're doing. It's a type of program that eventually will perhaps make the big difference if you're working with the parents and the infants at the same time and everything, and it's a marvelous program. I don't want to appear not to be in awe of what you're trying to do. I think it's wonderful. I was just trying to be cautionary because I didn't want to see people who were trying to do such a fine thing get caught in the middle, which I have seen in many other cases. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, Councilwoman, should we, Mr. Steed, do we take these one at a time, or can we vote them together?
I think it would be more comfortable if you did them separately.
Thank you. Councilwoman, would you like to move then to accept number twenty? We'll do them one at a time.
I move to accept.
Okay, and this is on item twenty-five. There's a motion, please vote. And please post.
I, I also want to say it's an honor to be able to make a motion on an educational agenda item. And so I move the same on item forty, to accept.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to accept item forty. Maybe? Maybe not? There it is. Please cast your votes and please post. Thank you. Item carries. Wonderful. Congratulations. Moving forward. Item number forty-one has been obeyed to September fifth. Item forty-two has been obeyed to September fifth. We will now move on to item forty-three. These are under resolutions. Our sixty-six, two oh one two, discussion for possible action concerning a resolution and notice regarding the granting of a telecommunications services franchise to E Care Nevada, Inc., setting the purpose, character, term, time, and conditions of the proposed franchise agreement. In place of Mr. Gerbic, or is Mr. Gerbic here going to do that?
Yes. Mr. Steed, present.
Go on, Mr. Steed, please.
If we can, okay. This is a fairly routine item. The city charter requires that each time there is a proposal to use the streets and highways of the city for a franchise, including a telecommunications franchise, that we go through a very specific process. This is the initial step to adopt a resolution, to set forth the character of the franchise. It's to be able, enable them to use on a non-exclusive basis the rights of way for their telecommunications facilities for a ten-year period, with an option renewed for five years. The resolution goes on to set a public hearing, which is going to be noticed twice in the newspaper. That public hearing would be set for the nineteenth of September. Again, it's a routine item, but we have representatives from our business licensing division, as well as from the proposed franchisee here in the audience, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions, counsel? Councilman Coffin.
Thank you. I'd like to inquire, counsel, if, if a channel exists for the laying of cable, what is the responsibility? Do we have a channel through our rights of way whereby people who are granted franchises to lay cable? Can they? Or are we going just electronically over our rights of way?
It's to be able to install underground, I believe. Is that correct?
Where there are IRUs or...
Excuse me, could you state your name and your association? Thank you.
I apologize. My name's Charlie Meyerson with E Care Nevada, ten one hundred Charleston Boulevard. Where there are IRUs, irrevocable rights of use, where we can use current, currently laid fiber, we're going to do so. There are specific places where we're trying to get to the hospitals for the NHA Association, and we need to do some build, mostly aerial, in the poles as opposed to trenching, but that is only where there is not current conduit available.
Thank you. No, thank you.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to accept, Councilman.
Motion to approve item number forty-three.
There's a motion. Please cast your vote and please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Good luck. Item number forty-four, boards and commissions, abeyance item. Autumn Oversight Committee, Michael W. Kern, term expires August eighteenth, two thousand and twelve. Procedure for this committee requires appointment, reappointment by the mayor with ratification by city council. Options are appoint new community at large member to replace Mr. Kern. At this time, I would like to obey this, if I may, until September. We're interviewing clients at this time, or potential committee members. So I will make that motion to obey this till the Sep- fifth, September fifth, please. And so making that motion, would you cast your votes, please? And will you post? Please. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to item number forty-five, abeyance item, traffic and parking commission. Betty Creake, term expires May fifteenth of two thousand and fourteen. She has resigned that position. Councilwoman Tarkanian, do you have a recommendation?
We have some, but we haven't been able to reach him yet because he's on vacation, so I'd like to obey.
Also to the same?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion to obey this item also until the fifth, fifth of September. Please cast your ballot and please post. Motion carries. Move on to item forty-six, discussion for possible action regarding member appointment to the Board of Appeals to fill the newly designated second general contractor seat. Mr. Knight is not here. He's on vacation. So do we have a recommendation on that? City clerk?
I think Chris did have a recommendation, but I don't have the name.
Okay, here's Mr. Bous.
Mayor members of the city council, Michael Bous, Code Enforcement Manager. Staff's recommendation is that council consider the appointment of Sean Danowski to this position. Mr. Danowski is a licensed Class B general contractor. He has twenty years of construction experience in Nevada. He's a member of the NAAB Board Directors. He also has a bachelor's science degree in construction management from UNLV, and we think he's a well-qualified candidate for this position.
Thank you very much. Comments, questions, Councilman Ross?
Yes, Mayor, Mr. Bous has reminded me that I was supposed to take care of this for Mr. Knight. Thank you, Mr. Bous. Would move to, would move to approve, Your Honor.
Thank you. There's a motion, unless there are any other comments, questions? Thank you. There's a motion, please vote and please post. Motion carries, and I gather, Ms. Clerk, you will take care of the notification on this. That's good news. So now we move on to recommending. And item forty-seven, recommending committee bill eligible for adoption at this meeting, bill number two oh one two dash two six. And Councilman Ross, do you wish to have the bill read?
I do, Mayor. Thank you.
Please do so.
Bill number two thousand and twelve dash twenty-six, First Amendment extends on, I'm sorry, in ordinance to extend on a temporary basis the display periods for temporary special event signs and to provide for other related matters. This bill, when orig- This bill, when originally introduced, included two different kinds of expansions of the display periods, one for new businesses and one for existing businesses. When the bill went to recommending committee meeting, there was a recommendation that, that all new and existing businesses have the expanded, the fully expanded display periods. That's the way it came through committee. It's my understanding that there have been further discussions and, and we'll see what happens.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone on council wished may comment to this? Yes, Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Mayor. And I would request, Mayor, that, I know this is a hearing item, but I would like the opportunity for some of the other industries to make comment to this item. I will make this comment, and especially to the council members, and thank you for your patience with this item. The intent of this is to make it easier for existing and new businesses to be in business. In this economic downturn, we at the City of Las Vegas have worked very hard, and we've been very diligent in regards to making it easier to do business in the city. We created the Downtown Services Center, One Stop Shop. We are currently going over business licensing applications and the, the arduous task of just making a simple application to open a 7-Eleven store. And I want to express my appreciation to Mr. Fag and his staff for, for staying on top of that, for the benefit of the businesses in this city. We all recognize that the success of our community is going to be based on our small businesses, and that's the whole point of this ordinance. It is a temporary ordinance. It is for two years, 24 months, so that we can help existing businesses or new businesses get started and promote their products. In several parts of the City of Las Vegas, we have challenges with temporary signs, temporary banners, certainly in Councilwoman Tarkanian's ward, certainly Councilman Coffin's ward, in several locations in my ward, I believe, we've got some challenges. But with this temporary ordinance and all of the work that Mr. Fag's staff has put into this, and the, and the, the business community themselves, I think we've come to a good resolution to kind of do our best to help the existing businesses and help new businesses grow at this point in our economy, Mayor.
Thank you. Were guidelines to the appearance of signage included?
And I think that's what the industry wants to talk about. We should have Mr. Fag come up here. I do want to make a comment about the other wards...
Because yours is about duration of signage and one size fits all.
Well, we'll let Mr. Fag address that because they still have to fit into our existing codes and standards. But I do want to make comment from my other council members and for the general public. If this isn't working, we need to take a look at it. If businesses are not pulling permits as required, if businesses are violating our codes and standards, we may have to revisit this before the 24 months expire. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Flynn Fag, Department of Planning. In response to your question about are there standards for the appearance or the maintenance of the signs, because these are temporary signs for a limited time period only, there are not guidelines in terms of the appearance. It's intended, again, that they are temporary signs. The only thing that you are considering today is the length of time that they may be displayed. I will add that in our general sign code regulations, there is the requirement that signs be maintained in a proper fashion. If they are not, we refer those to code enforcement.
And content therein as well?
We are not allowed to regulate content per federal regulations.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I would say, Flynn, I just would say that sometimes in the, in the use of the signs, we do have some signs and small businesses that might be rudimentary. They're not, you know, really sharp signs. But that's okay. I mean, we have a way that we can address that also, right? If we have a problem, we will be able to address this. How about the amount of space that you can use on window fronting? Is that regulated at all?
Yes, that's in a separate part of the code in terms of any window signage. We limit window signage to 20% of the window area. And again, that's not being considered today. That's something that's already in the code.
Right.
And we're not making any adjustments to that.
Right.
Limitation on the area in windows.
Okay. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Flynn, let's see now. Sometimes signs don't get to stay up long enough. You know how it is. I think I illustrated to the recommending committee an example, but let me repeat it to you in public here because I can't recall exactly how this will be treated. But you have, you have a mall, a strip mall, or in any event, it may or may not face the street. But it may face a street, which could be a long way away. If you have a banner that shows, and I thought, for example, my good friends Lou and Myrna Donato, who own Amber Unicorn Bookstore, came to me and said, you know, they had just been threatened with citation because they had put up the Review Journal's Best of Las Vegas sign, a banner. And apparently, they weren't allowed to hang it up on the exterior. They were allowed to hang it inside. And an inspector had come by, had not sighted them, but he said, you need to take it down because you could be sighted. Well, does this address that problem some, in any event? Because I thought that we were being overly restrictive in this kind of situation.
If it is a banner, then it would be a temporary sign. It would be subject to the time limitations that we have in our code relative to banners.
What you're saying is it liberalizes that particular situation?
And what you're considering today would give them additional time to post that banner, to have that up on their building.
Okay, all right.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to add something else. I wanted, when I talked about the types of signs, I was just indicating that as a reason why I have a concern in Ward 1 for some of the things you've gone through, but I wanted to thank Flynn and also Councilman Ross. Councilman Ross, I'm thanking you for, for all the time and effort in the meetings to have this work out.
Thank you, Mr. Steed.
Just a clarification regarding the discussion about content. Mr. Fag is right, but I do believe that there is some self-limitation in that these will be onsite advertisements. So, so while you aren't going to be able to say that's, you know, outrageously objectionable to me, it can't be an off-premise sign. It's self-regulating content-wise in that it has to be on that, on that site.
Any other questions, comments? Councilman Ross? Oh, from the private sector, we do, we are welcoming you. Our congratulations and best wishes due. Did I hear something?
No, not for me.
Okay.
Good morning, Jennifer Lazovich, 8345 West Sunset Road, here today on behalf of Lamar Outdoor Advertising. First of all, our apologies to Councilman Ross for coming up and sharing our comments with you today on this item. We just realized the, a potential impact of this ordinance on an issue that we, as part of the billboard industry, have been working on with your city, and that is through the super graphic or building wrap stakeholder meeting. In so much as this ordinance would impact the type of super graphics that could be up for a certain period of time, six months, on behalf of Lamar, we feel obligated to request that certain size signs may need to come before a public hearing as a design review for this body and/or your planning commission to consider. Again, when you get into the size signs, especially that we're discussing with the super graphic, it certainly alters the look of an area, obviously the building. And what we're simply saying is we want a level playing field. Obviously, a lot of our structures have gone through design reviews, and they're far smaller. They're 672 square feet, where some signs that we're talking about are 90,000 square feet. And we think that perhaps those should have a design review. Again, my apologies to Councilman Ross for coming up at this late hour to offer those thoughts, but we just realized the impact last night. Thank you.
And you're questioning, are you questioning at this point, then, the electronic changing display of a different type of banner or something?
No, it's more, at least right now, what we're, what I'm saying is more the size of, what we're seeing so far are just building wraps. The entire building is being wrapped in some type of sign. And we're simply saying that we think there should be a design review associated with that. That's all we're saying.
Good, thank you.
Good morning, Patrick Smith, on behalf of Clear Channel Outdoor. I just, to avoid redundancy, I, wholeheartedly, we agree with what Jennifer Lazovich had said. We would support a design review on any signs above a certain square footage. And with that, again, we would support such a design review before planning commission or the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fag, does that impede, cause an obstacle to, or change, alter, or potentially do something that we're going to be looking to pass at this moment?
Potentially, yes. What you have before you right now is just simply to consider a limited period of time that you will allow signs to be up longer than is currently identified in code. That is all you are considering today. You're not opening it up to any changes to size, type, et cetera, et cetera. I don't disagree with the comments that have been made here at the podium today in terms of larger format signs. It may be appropriate to have design review for those. However, what I would recommend, that rather than trying to tack that on to what you have before you right now, that we do that as a separate ordinance that perhaps comes forward with whatever comes out of the stakeholder group that is currently considering building wrap signage.
That sounds like a very good suggestion. Does anybody here have a problem with this suggestion? Councilman Barlow?
Yes, Flynn? Don't leave too soon. Thank you so very much.
I want to make sure the public has the opportunity to come up.
Oh, the public hasn't spoken yet? Then I will refrain from my comments until after the public has spoken, Mayor. Mayor?
I'm so sorry.
I'll refrain from my comments until after the public has spoken.
Okay, well, beyond what we've just heard from public, it wasn't going to be a public comment time.
Okay.
Does somebody else wish to make a comment? Since we've done it once, we opened it up.
Okay, okay.
Okay, Councilman Barlow, it's yours, nobody can...
Thank you, Mayor. Flynn, just for a point of clarification, as I read here through the, the proposed ordinance before us, we're looking to adjust the ordinance from the, for new sign applications, six months.
Correct.
Which basically is 180 days.
Correct.
And for all existing, we're bumping that up by a month, and now it's four months for all existing.
120 days.
120.
Correct.
Correct? Okay. And as far as the two-year extension, why aren't we, why wasn't there a proposal for one year versus two? Because it seems like if, in fact, there's any adjustments or anything that we see within the next 12 months, we have an opportunity to address it versus 24 months. So help me understand, why not 12 months instead of 24 months, as far as the recommendation?
The 24 months is a sunset provision, meaning that after July of 2014, this basically goes away and we revert back to the limitation of four times per year and 60 days, which is what the code currently is.
Okay.
And so all this is doing is just for a two-year period, allowing additional time for temporary special event signage, and then it goes away.
So the sunset is July 1st, 2014?
Correct.
And then it comes back to where we are today?
And then it goes back, reverts to the time period that we currently have in place.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, anything else?
I just said automatically.
Automatically, correct.
Okay.
Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Mayor. And I would direct Mr. Fag and your staff, as business applicants come in to obtain their permits for their temporary signs, that your staff be directed to remind them that this is only a 24-month ordinance. I don't want the business community coming back to this council in 24 months hollering and screaming that we're not being fair to them. The idea here is to be as business-friendly as possible in this economic climate. It's good to see the chamber here today, so they understand that as well and share that with their members, because that's what this is about. And I think that's what this council's certainly been working diligently on with your staff to make that happen, as well as a Mr. Knight staff in building and safety. That being said, Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion with your permission.
Before the motion, Mayor, I apologize, Councilman Ross. Flynn, you had mentioned that something else was under review that would be coming before the council as it relates to the building wraps, because I know I had a couple of conversations with individuals this week as it pertained to content and business, content and building wraps. This is totally separate from that conversation?
Correct.
Okay, so that conversation will be coming?
Will be coming forward.
Before the council, at what point, roughly?
We have had one meeting of a stakeholder group. We have a second meeting scheduled for tomorrow. Depending on the discussion that we have there, within a couple of months, we might have something finalized that we could then bring forward and brief council members on.
Okay. And I'll just point out this one particular property, just to get clarity as far as the old Fitzgerald's, the D, with their building wrap. This item that we're voting on today won't affect the D in any way as far as this is concerned, or how does that get into the scope of the conversation?
Actually, it does affect the D. Let me explain how. The signage that you currently see on the D was issued as a temporary special event sign, the type of sign that we're considering today. They are allowed to have that up for a maximum period of 60 days. If this is passed today, that gives them some additional time to display that signage. So that's how it impacts them, is it would give them additional time to leave those signs up on the building.
So they're in essence grandfathered in, should this item pass today, as far as going out to the 2014 sunset?
Let me...
Clarify.
Clarify.
That's why I'm asking the question.
Not grandfathered, per se.
Okay.
Their sign permit was issued for 60 days. So as a new business...
When was it submitted?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay.
Their permit was issued for 60 days. If this is passed, they would get an additional 60 days to display that signage on their building. It would then need to come down. They would not be able to put it up again until the next calendar year because, I'm sorry, I have that wrong. It's 180 days. They would not be able to display that again until the next calendar year, because the maximum period that you're considering here today is 180 days in a calendar year. It then has to come down and would be the next calendar year before they could apply it again.
Okay, when does this start?
This starts upon adoption.
Upon publication, which would be this weekend.
Okay, so the 180-day will begin this weekend. Is that correct, Val?
They will get the benefit, beginning this weekend, anybody would get the benefit of that 180 days, whether they're starting from zero or starting from whatever the D is starting from.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
While it's expensive, could they take it down and put it back up still in the calendar year? Is it 180 contiguous days? Or for the, is it written that way, that it has to be the continuous days?
No.
They can take it down, put it up, take it down, put it up?
Correct. They cannot exceed 180 days.
So every other day, they could make it through the whole year?
Well, it says eight times per calendar year, not to exceed 180 days. So they could take it up and down eight times.
Okay.
But in aggregate, it cannot exceed 180 days.
Thank you. Okay, Councilman?
We've essentially doubled everything, Mayor, to make it easier for businesses to exist and survive and start today in the City of Las Vegas. So thank you all for your input. And I am grateful that these building wrap meetings are taking place and would encourage all of the billboard industry to participate, because I think it is a reality for all of us to understand that one day we will have building wraps downtown. And I think that's significant in order to help our downtown businesses survive as well. It's a reality of today.
I would see in the future electronic building wraps that will be changing whatever they're advertising. So there's a lot to consider going forward. But this today only is the motion as clarified by Mr. Fag.
That being said, Mayor, yes, no?
Councilman Barlow?
Councilman Ross, I apologize again. I wasn't sure if we covered the question that was brought forward by the billboard industry as it relates to design review. Where does that come into play? I missed that piece.
What I would suggest to you is that we consider design review as a later ordinance, perhaps coming forward with the building wrap ordinance. I think there would be difficulties in trying to add that on to what you have before you today, which only considers lengthening the time period.
Okay, so that conversation will be a part of the building wrap conversation when it's brought before the mayor council?
We would be happy to bring that together with the building wrap.
The design review?
Yes.
Okay. Ross?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman.
Okay, let's try it again. Anybody else? Okay, here we go.
Mayor, on a... Mayor, on agenda 47, I would move for its approval and include...
This is the First Amendment that appears in your book, which is all businesses 180 days eight times. Is that correct?
I believe that you still wanted to make the distinction between new businesses and existing businesses?
No, negative. We were going to follow the recommending committee's recommendation.
Okay, so that's all businesses eight times 180 days?
Correct. New and existing businesses. That's the motion, Mayor.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote.
Yes.
Did we vote, then? Okay, please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Fag and everybody, and our recommending committee as well. Item number 48, bill number 2012-33. Councilwoman Tarkanian do wish to have the bill read.
Of course I do.
Bill number 2012-33, an ordinance to adopt a redevelopment plan for redevelopment area two, generally located west of the downtown portions of the existing redevelopment area, and including a number of non-contiguous parcels located north and south of West Sahara Avenue, north and south of West Charleston Boulevard, and east and west of Decatur Boulevard, and to provide further related matters.
Thank you. Can you address at some point how we arrived at the exact locations that were included in this redevelopment too at some point, so everybody can understand how it was arrived at? Please.
Certainly. Good morning, Mayor, members of council. For the record, Bill Arntz, Director, Economic and Urban Development. Today's action is the final step for adoption of a new redevelopment area that we're naming Redevelopment Area Two. The ordinance adopts redevelopment area two and the corresponding redevelopment plan, which implements actions the agency is looking to take in the area. If I could get some assistance with the overhead, on the overhead is a map of Area Two. What we've done with this area... Yeah, thank you. What we've done with this area is, in looking at redevelopment, one of the things we look at is what is happening in the community, really from two major perspectives. One is what is happening with the economic base or the tax base of the area. The second thing we look at, and what redevelopment is designed to do, is to eliminate blight, which is a term used in state law, that mainly means properties or areas that are starting to decline and deteriorate. And there are a number of factors that we've reviewed in past meetings. How we started is, we took direction from the city council, acting as the Board of Directors of the Redevelopment Agency, directing staff to take a look at an area, which we call an area of evaluation. And then we go in and we look at the area. We intentionally start off very broad, and there's a reason. The law is very prescriptive in how we look at an area. We have to go property by property, building by building, parcel by parcel, documenting what is happening in the area. Are these properties declining? Are there conditions of blight, which are enumerated in state law, which include factors such as irregular-shaped lots, which we have in parts of this area, vacant lots, which we have in this area. And there are a list of 11 factors which are in the state law, and some of those are listed in the ordinance, which is for adoption. So what we've done is, we've taken a corridor approach. We looked at three commercial corridors, because they're adjacent to our existing redevelopment area, and really are some neighborhoods which... certainly the neighborhoods for most of these areas are really part of the urban fabric. They're urban core neighborhoods, which are adjacent to downtown, and we believed could be experiencing some decline. So we went and we surveyed all the properties. There's a blight study, which is actually part of the backup that was considered at the public hearing on July 25. And we looked at three commercial corridors, Decatur corridor, Charleston corridor, and Sahara corridor. And we looked at these areas, we mapped the areas, and we documented the level of blight. Those findings were submitted on the July 25 hearing, so I'm not going to go back over those. What's interesting, we actually, following all the public meetings that we held, prior to the public hearing on July 25, we sent a notice to each property owner, and that was discussed at the public hearing. There's only one commercial property owner throughout this process, in the history of the process, there's only one at the end of the day that has asked to be removed from the property. We just got that notice yesterday. I wanted to put a new map up on the overhead. And it's... the property, it's highlighted there in green on the map. It's at the northwest corner of Sahara Avenue and Rancho. It's a property that's owned by Thomas and Mack Company. You're probably familiar with the Wells Fargo Office Tower, and there's some retail in that complex. The owner did send a written notice asking to be removed from the area. They felt that their property was not blighted, and they wished to be removed. I would like to read those parcels into the record. It will be reflected in amendment to the final plan, which will be part of the adoption. And those three parcels are 16205802009, 16205802010, 16205802011. So throughout this process, which has been over a two-year process, there's only one commercial owner that's been asked to remove. We did have the church on Charleston where we inadvertently included part of their property that was adjacent to Charleston, and we removed that parcel. But this was the only commercial property that asked to be removed. So I think that's reflective of the series of community meetings that we've held, both with neighborhood groups, business groups, and then which culminated in the public hearing on July 25.
Excuse me, Mr. Arntz. Why... was there any indication as to why? Did they just feel there's a downside to be considered in this, or what?
They didn't cite any reason as far as a downside. I think they just felt that their property was not blighted, and so they just wanted to be removed. And...
And they can't change their minds two years out because something's happening?
Once it's removed, it's removed, but we did make that commitment publicly throughout our meetings, that if, after hearing all the benefits of redevelopment, a property owner still wished to be removed, that they could. The letter did come into Councilwoman Tarkanian's office. I don't know if she has any comments or would care to elaborate.
Only that I believe that the owners feel that they take great pride in the fact that in all their properties throughout the cities, they keep them up very well, and they didn't want to be included in something that might say blighted.
Right.
That's my impression from the letter. They were not against the RDA. It was just that they had that feeling about their property, and quite honestly, they're right. Their property there looks very good.
Mayor and Councilwoman, thank you. The other thing I'd add is that the area that was shown on the preceding map, there are a number of properties that are not blighted, individual properties, individual buildings. The criteria for redevelopment is, is the overall area blighted. So there's certainly some gems in this area. We're grateful and appreciative of general growth and how they've maintained the Meadows Mall, for instance. So there are a lot of properties in this area, but what we're concerned is, and that's why we looked at these corridors, these commercial corridors, is businesses don't operate in a vacuum. And we heard that at the public hearing. One of the speakers, Mr. DeBella from DeBella's Flars, who runs a fine business, is concerned about what's happening around him, and that's what redevelopment's really designed to address.
Does it mean... excuse me, Mr. Arntz, does it mean then, if they have kept their property up, but have remained in the redevelopment, the new redevelopment, they are then eligible, regardless of the fact of how nicely they've kept it up, for redevelopment funding of some sort, whether it's visual improvement or something?
They are... correct. They are eligible for assistance from the Redevelopment Agency through all our various programs, the visual improvement program, tax increment, financing rebates. So there are some advantages. There are criteria in the state law which they have to meet, showing that the need for the assistance. But for the assistance from the agency, they would not be able to move forward. So there's certainly some things that we have to substantiate at the time of the request. But just because they've maintained the property doesn't mean that they're ineligible. A good example would be if an existing property, which is well-maintained, has vacant property adjacent to it, and they'd want to expand and develop. That vacant lot may be underdeveloped, so to speak, and so that's something we certainly look at.
But the one that is kept up would have to come back to EUD, or come back to you or to the city council?
Well, to both.
For that?
To both. We have a standard application process, depending on the type of assistance they require, and all those types of assistance do require approval from the council acting as the board of directors.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
The final point I wanted to make is, if adopted, what happens is, that entire redevelopment area, essentially what happens is, the property tax base is frozen. And one of the misconceptions, I think, that some of the public may have at times, is they see the size of these maps and these areas, and think that there's a huge sum of money that we're talking about, which will be, have an adverse impact on other jurisdictions. While the area is quite large, the tax base for this area by assessed valuation is approximately $287 million. Sounds like a big number. That's roughly about 2% of the city's overall tax base, which is approximately $13 billion. So it's not a huge proportion of even the city's tax base, let alone the valley's tax base. What happens is, the tax base is frozen, and any new taxes from new development or appreciation in property, which we call tax increment, comes to the benefit of the agency, and it's a portion to the agency to reinvest back into the area. We've done an analysis, and it is part of the backup in the plan, and is, was on record at the July 25 hearing, that for every 1% increase in that tax base, the agency would realize approximately $72,000 in new revenue. That, we believe, is a conservative projection, but it just shows the kind of revenue impact that it'll have. So it's not having a real big impact on other jurisdictions. However, what that means is, over time, it's recurring revenue. So as that tax base starts to increase, then it starts to expand, and we do have significant funding generated from that new development to reinvest back into the area. That's what we've done in the existing area. That's what we hope to do in the new area. The one final point I wanted to make is, in addition to the report that was on record and discussed at the July 25 public hearing, I wanted to add a quick few statistics to show the extent to which the tax base has declined. And this took some work through our GIS team and our staff at the city. But over a three-year period, the city overall experienced a property tax decline of approximately 39%. For each of these corridors, respectively, Sahara Avenue, Charleston Boulevard, and Decatur Boulevard, experienced declines of 47%, 40%, and 32%. So in Sahara and Charleston case, the actual tax decline, the rate of decline exceeded the rest of the city, which is something we'd expect to see in an area considering for redevelopment. The Decatur Boulevard corridor did not exceed. The decline was lower than the rest of the city. We believe that to be the case, because Decatur did not appreciate as fast as the rest of the city and those other corridors. So it didn't come up as fast. It's not declining as fast. But we wanted to put those statistics on the record, because we think it adds to the substance that's already in the report, documenting the need and substantiating the need for using redevelopment in this area. Redevelopment, it's a fiscal tool to try to address this decline. It's not a panacea, but we believe it's really is one of the only fiscal tools that the city has in trying to address decline. It's a tool that's used throughout the country. It's used in every state except for Arizona. It's used in downtowns and urban areas to try to address decline, and it's a long-term prospect. We're going to see incremental progress, we believe, if this area is enacted. So you're going to see building by building, property by property, improvements made in the area, new development made in the area. We think it's going to have a big impact in the area over time. This would be an area that would have a 30-year life. So we believe, given that 30 years, we can accomplish some wonderful things that we would not be able to do, but for inclusion in redevelopment and redevelopment agency assistance. With that, I recommend approval. I thank you for your time and open up to any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions, council? Comments? Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Arntz, we've got to fit those parameters. I mean, you kind of indicated that in your entire presentation. We've got to fit those parameters to include any kind of corridor in a redevelopment area. And you... I like the way you use the tax revenue as... it painted a good picture for me to understand those corridors and the tax revenues of yesterday as opposed to today. Are you doing this throughout the city? I mean, I'm thinking the Rancho corridor right now in my mind, because I'm having some issues in the Rancho corridor. And I know how what an arduous task it is to create an additional or add to our already existing redevelopment areas. Have you done any numbers on the Rancho corridor area beyond Councilman Barlow's award, heading out to the northwest at all?
Thank you, Councilman. We have looked at the existing area, and we think that there's some areas that certainly warrant inclusion to the existing area, that are more readily adjacent to the existing area. So we're on a separate, somewhat parallel tract, looking at some additional commercial corridors in and around the existing area. I believe Rancho is one of the corridors we've looked at. Additional property in West Las Vegas, additional property in East Las Vegas. We're going through the same kind of analysis. There is a cap in state law. We can't have revenue to the agency exceeding 10% of what the city would take in off its whole property tax base. We're nowhere near that cap. We're well under it. I think we're at about a third of that cap. So we do have room within the parameters of state law to consider additional area. We're doing that in and around the downtown area, and it's... sometimes the evidence may be a little bit mixed. One of the tough things to look at in this time is, is the area declining above and beyond what the entire market's declining? And that's something where we have to really look at long-term trends. What's not... not just what's happened in the last 12 months, what's been happening in the last few years, the last several years. That's why I mentioned those tax base statistics. That's why we have socioeconomic data in the final report to council. It's not a clear 100% case that everything is declining much worse than the rest of the city. Like everything in an economy, there's numbers that support, and there's some numbers that show that it's not declining well above the overall air decline. So we've tried to paint a clear picture. We do think it's pretty clear that these corridors are hurting. Sahara and Charleston are hurting worse in the city. Decatur has been... the decline hasn't exceeded the city, but it hasn't experienced the growth that the rest of the city's experienced. So we believe that, based on those factors, it definitely warrants it for redevelopment.
And Mayor, if I may continue, and thank you, Mr. Arntz, because my question and your response leads me into my next comments. I think it's incumbent, and even though we're bound by law that we've got to fit these certain parameters, it's incumbent for us as a city to look forward and recognize these challenging areas that may be occurring in the years to come, and being proactive instead of reactive to some of these areas that we see coming, that may be that blighted area one day. And if we can get in front of that train and stop that from happening, or do everything in our power as a redevelopment agency or a city council to make that change and make that difference, it helps everybody in this community. So thank you for your comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Tarkanian?
I would just like to add, that's exactly what happened, Councilman Ross. I could see the decline occurring, and I could see what was happening in other places, and it was getting more and more rapid. And so I reached out to RDA, but you're exactly right. And it isn't that everything's a mess right now, or it can't be helped back, but I wanted to do it before you got to that point. And it was a proactive move, and I think that's how we need to look throughout the entire city. I'm agreeing.
Thank you. And city staff is continuously out there looking at pockets? Or is it the responsibility of the councilperson to bring that to your attention? Is city staff out there looking at it always?
Yes, the answer is yes. Now, this process, it's a fairly lengthy process, and we take serious whether or not to add it in or not. So we generally go through this exercise about every three years. We've done it with this area. We've done it with the existing area, looking at some areas adjacent to the existing area, which is running concurrently. The last expansion or additional area that we added was in 2006. The last expansion or additional area that we added was in 2006. But things change over time. Economies are dynamic. Real estate markets are dynamic. Neighborhoods are dynamic. So we do periodically throughout each year, look at areas, what's happening in the community, work with the council, work with our staff that are working with community groups like the neighborhood association. So it is a continuous process. What tends to happen is it tends to bubble up every few years because it's a lot of work to add new property into a redevelopment area.
Councilman Barlow and then Councilman Beers.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Art, Councilman Ross hit it on the head as far as being proactive, being able to identify specific areas throughout the city of Las Vegas that are on the decline and being able to capture them before they completely fall off, like some of the areas that we've seen in the past, is important moving forward. For example, the corner of Sahara and Decatur. Years ago, there were a number of car dealerships that flooded that entire corridor. Well, if you look at that area today with the BMW that has gone and come again, as well as I believe the fries across the street, you know, just looking at those corners that things are falling off. Excuse me, I need to get some water. But also the corridor of Rancho, as the councilman mentioned as well, a lot of vacant parcels of land that exist up and down that corridor, specifically once you get past, I want to say Lake Mead. Lake Mead going north is an area that we need to look at and see. I know a portion of it is North Las Vegas, but there's also a great portion of it that is City of Las Vegas. So something for us to take into consideration and look at and see what we can do to wrap our arms around that corridor as well, to see what we can do to bring some type of revitalized development project moving forward. Thank you.
Councilman Beers?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. As I've talked to people throughout my ward about this new proposed redevelopment agency, there's a lot of questions about the basics. I don't think there's a lot of people who understand the fundamentals. And so I did a little research. They were thought up by the 1959 legislature, which passed it in the form of NRS 279, and it's known as Nevada's Community Redevelopment Law, modeled pretty much after public policy that had emerged over the previous decade in California through both legislative action, votes of the people. It was a big deal. And there's actually an additional state besides Arizona that no longer, or that doesn't use redevelopment, and that's California because they ended it two years ago. The concept is the government can use this tool, as Bill has said, to combat and even reverse blight noble. There's two primary tools in this law. One is eminent domain, and as you read through the plan before us, this document is all about eminent domain. I guess legally, we have the ability to use eminent domain without a redevelopment agency, but this adds the purpose of the private-to-private taking, although we kind of have limited that through ballot action here through Pistol a couple of years back. But that's what this document says, is that it's okay to use eminent domain to take from one private party to give to another. The other tool that this provides is tax increment financing, which is where we get the money that would go to libraries and schools from increases in property tax into the city and use that to rebuild this area slowly over the years, presumably rejuvenating it. And finally, after a period of decades under this law, the redevelopment agency disappears and the money goes to the schools and the libraries that they would have been getting, but they wouldn't have been getting it if we hadn't reversed blight. That's the concept. I was taken aback by the degree to which the plan talks about eminent domain. Took some comfort in the fact that we've had phenomenal leadership in the city. I've only been an observer for all of your husband's time as mayor, but he led the council to not just not use this power of eminent domain wisely, I think, but in fact to resolve to not use it. Council's changed, though. In fact, more than 25% of the members of this council did not sit on it when that resolution was passed. And certainly a future council could change its mind and resolve to start using private-to-private taking despite the now constitutional language in place. Our experience in the city is in fact really what drove the people of the state to address this in the form of a ballot question. Our experience with eminent domain has not been very good. The problems are legion and well documented in our history books, but they continue to plague us through 2012. Historically, when the city uses eminent domain for this purpose, we end up getting sued and losing, and the cost of the project pretty consistently doubles at least when we do this, not to generate the ill will, or not to mention the ill will that's generated. Even this year, we saw the redevelopment agency try to slip through a $6.5 million loss due to bad prior administration's decision-making in the form of an affordable housing cost. That was when they leaked to the press that we had the most expensive affordable housing per unit. That in fact was false. It was because they were counting the $6.5 million lost value of the property as an affordable housing cost. So it continues to hurt the city today. There are probably still pockets of dollars in there that we've never fully recognized the loss from because real estate speculation is at heart a risky business. So thank you and thank your husband for the leadership. The mayor before your husband did not share his sentiments and we saw a lot of those problems come up. And what does the future hold? I don't know, but it makes me uncomfortable approving this document, which is all about exercising eminent domain in a manner that doesn't seem constitutional anymore. That's one of the reasons why I'm planning to vote against this measure. It's not an easy decision for me. In addition, I'm concerned that the planned document itself has some flaws. And these documents are important because if you do make somebody mad in redevelopment, which it kind of seems like somebody always gets mad in redevelopment, then they go back through this document, this plan with a fine-tooth comb, and if they find problems, then we have problems as a result in the ensuing legal actions. This plan, you know, one of the things we have to find is that it's economically feasible. But the reason, or the finding that it's economically feasible comes down to a for-sure revenue projection of this much and an ability to completely control and keep to zero if we want. If this revenue doesn't happen, we can keep our expenses to zero. Both premises are false. The budget that we passed a few months ago calls for a 5% drop in assessed property value in our city in the next year, not an increase, which this plan says is sure to happen. And on the expense side, we're going to incur at least $25,000 cash out of pocket in accounting and auditing fees because this RDA has to have its own CAFR. It's its own legal entity. So there's going to be some incremental immediate costs. I don't think there's going to be any incremental revenue. We don't have an investor standing by, ready to do a project that's going to create that increment. And if we can get somebody to do it, we're only going to get them to do it because we have agreed to give them 70% or 80% or 90% of the increment anyway. So I don't see that we're going to be able to get this thing off the ground in the short run, maybe the long run, but that gives us time to polish the document and perhaps take a more thoughtful approach to it. So I also noted the business impact statement that's in our packet. It's required by NRS 237 and everything there says not identified. I think the chamber addressed that. I would agree that that document is not complete yet and has the potential, as with the other problems with the plan, to cause those legal problems down the road. Finally, I'm voting against the plan because I'm concerned that the $1 million of general fund that we're putting in to jumpstart this project isn't enough. This is about nine, 10 miles of main drag, as I used to call it when I walked it between my house and my middle school. That was before society gave me a driver's license. And it's a long stretch of road. There's a lot going on there, and the little amount of money that we're talking about putting into it in a time when assessed value is forecast to drop in our official budget, I just don't think it's going to be noticed enough to create that resounding value increase that we're trying to create through the expenditure of the million bucks. So I will be voting against. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm wondering, is there, before Councilman Anthony, Mayor Protem Anthony comments? Any comments? I saw you taking copious notes. Is there anything that you would like to comment back?
I wouldn't comment on each point. I would agree with Councilman Beers' sentiment on the business impact statement. I think it could have tied in a lot of the data that we had in our staff report, so that's something we can look to do in the future. I still think it meets the requirements of the statute. The economic feasibility is something that's important in the revenue projection, so that's the only other point I wanted to touch on. We do have a revenue projection, which is in the report that was submitted to council and part of the backup with the public hearing. That did show a revenue projection based on sensitivity analysis, what happens with the property, if there's additional revenue in the amount of a half percent, 1% and so forth. And there's really no-
Or it could be flat.
Or it could be flat.
It could be flat.
And the initial year for next, for this upcoming fiscal year, Council Beers is correct overall, the city has budgeted for a drop in property tax. Forward-looking projections for property tax are very difficult. I think our chief financial officer would echo that. So it really is a projection. What we can control is expenses. And we do have very nominal expenses with adding this. We do have an audit, as Councilman Beers referred to, at an expense of approximately $29,000. There's no additional staff that we're looking to hire as a result of this, so there's no new overhead staff. And then with projects, we're wanting to make sure that that initial seed investment from the city's general fund is a worthwhile investment and results in new private investment. So we're working, as we speak, on an investment strategy, how to spend that. We want to certainly get input from the entire council on that. We want to be risk averse for those investments so that we don't put, for instance, that $1 million investment into a single investment and then wait on private investment. We want to look more like we've done with things like the VIP program, where we make a series of small investments. We're seeing the private sector invest alongside with us. And yes, we're not going to see a huge spike right away in tax revenue, but we do believe over time that we can see some increase. So we do believe that it's feasible, but it is a long-term effort, as Councilman alluded to. So we remain committed to making sure that we invest these dollars wisely as part of the plan.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Beers, the points are so well taken, and I know as you look, sometimes, I mean, from what I can see and living in that area for 37 years now, have seen it go on from a very rich substantive area to what's happened because of the economic problems of the country, but here. And somehow, you know, to try to build things back and as Councilman Ross said, the proactive stance to it, I would worry that if we don't do anything, how bad's it going to get? I certainly am a believer, as you mentioned so eloquently about eminent domain, and of course do believe half of my body and soul belongs to the other half of my life. And obviously, we would be in full agreement that eminent domain is something that's a poisonous pill. And as my, under my leadership, mine will be identical going forward in this because I believe it and I know what has happened in prior administrations and not knowing why, but that's not my problem. But I just feel I have such faith in the city and knowing the 61 acres and what's happened looking forward, and there are no guarantees, but if you don't try and don't try to prevent, I'd be worried for us. So I really respect your comments and learned a lot through them and believe in what you said and certainly, but I just, living there and watching this decline, feel that we really have to try, try to give everybody a boost up wherever we can. I worry about the pockets that are out there. And I don't know, as you go into this project or go into other ones in the future, if you could pick up this pocket and pick up this pocket to include it and how you would go about that. I think I'm too new to the game to understand that, and you have years of experience in the area. So Councilman, Mayor Protem and anybody else? Shall we save you to last?
I would.
Okay, excuse me, Councilman Barlow. We are going to, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Bill, you mentioned at the beginning or sometime in your presentation that this is a big deal. It's a serious business to take a piece of land and put it into the redevelopment agency. And that's true, and you put a lot of time into it. And what I want to do is just kind of look at the NRS because there's a couple of stated policies that refer to redevelopment. And according to NRS 279416, it states the declaration of stated policy, the necessity of redevelopment of blighted areas, which basically means, is it necessary to take an area that is believed to be blighted and put it into redevelopment area? So is it necessary? And then it goes on to say in the next one, under stated policy 279418, "The area is a growing menace of blighted areas to public health, safety, and welfare." A growing menace of blighted areas to public health, safety, and welfare. So way previous to me, when you looked at the downtown area and you started out some of your presentations by saying traditionally redevelopment has been the downtown area. It's usually downtown. Very seldom goes out into the kind of the suburbs area. So you look at downtown Las Vegas and downtown Las Vegas was a growing menace of blighted area to public health, safety, and welfare for a long time, since I've been here. You go back 20 years and downtown Las Vegas was prostitutes, it was drug dealers, it was crime-ridden. Nobody would come down here. You risked your life going on Fremont Street past Las Vegas Boulevard. I mean, it was ridiculous. And the city council decided that because of that, it needed to go into a redevelopment agency because it was necessary. Because if you didn't do that, downtown wouldn't grow. So because of that, we developed redevelopment downtown and it's worked. But the interesting thing is whether the economy was good or whether the economy was bad, downtown was a dump. And redevelopment really changed that. And we can see the fruits of it today, and former mayor Oscar Goodman, you know, took that by the reins. Our current mayor took that by the reins to make sure that downtown is growing and it is. So now you get to this particular area, area two, and you have to look at and say, is it necessary to put this stretch of property that you've identified in a redevelopment area because it is a menace to public safety and health? And I don't see that. I mean, I really don't. You look at one area across from the College of Southern Nevada, you walk across the street from there and there's a shopping center, there's, I think there's a Starbucks there, there's a Chinese restaurant, Capriati's. I teach part-time there and I go there every once in a while, and it's not a menace to public safety and health. It doesn't fit that category. And you could go up and down other sections and it's not a menace to public safety and health in order to put it in the redevelopment agency. I look at that, those areas that we've identified, and you could go in lots of corridors in the city of Las Vegas and find the same economic troubles. You can go down to Sahara and Eastern, Maryland Parkway, all over Southern Nevada and find corridors that we've identified here that look just like they do, which means all of those should be in a redevelopment area also. Now, the county doesn't have a redevelopment area, but it's kind of a similar structure or the similar look. So I just don't, I don't see how we can, how we can fit the statute as far as putting these areas into redevelopment agency when it's really, what has occurred is because of the downturn in the economy in the last four or five years, and when the economy turns around and it wells, these corridors, just like any other corridor that looks like it in Southern Nevada, is going to come back. in Southern Nevada, is going to come back. And is it necessary to put the time and effort and the money into designating it as a redevelopment area? Especially when you get into the concept of what Councilman Beers has mentioned, into this eminent domain area, which is something to consider, because we are all not going to be here seven, eight years from now. So that's my concern. I don't believe it belongs in a redevelopment area. I think this is something that will come back, and we have, you know, urban and economic development folks that can help and kind of try to rejuvenate this area. But if we do pass this today, then I don't know why we just don't go ahead and designate the rest of the four, for, what would this go to, 6%? Is that right, of the 10%?
It's really closer to a third.
A third, okay.
By tax base, it would be higher, but that 10% cap is based on revenue, so we're still well under it. I think we'd have to get revenue up in close to 40 million to hit that, so we're well-
But if we do pass this today like Councilman Ross, then let's take, let's look at Rancho, let's look at Lake Mead, we could get to 10% by the definition we're using in these corridors pretty quickly. And, you know, I don't know why we wouldn't even do that. And then the other part of this that really kind of, kind of bothers me is, is once we freeze the property taxes today, what does that happen to the, what happens to the general revenue of the city of Las Vegas? What happens to the general revenue of the Metropolitan Police Department, the Library District? Whoever is on that list that gets money from property taxes, we are affecting their funding source, we're affecting how they're operating. And I don't know if that's, if that's fair to do that in this particular definition of what this new redevelopment area is. So because of all that, I'm not going to be supporting this item today, and we'll just kind of go from there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. Can you answer that question, or Mark, wherever you are, Mark's not here? Betsy, can you answer the spill-out, which it sounds like in the question or statement that Mayor Protem meant about counted upon budget dollars?
I'll have, I'll have Bill give you the specifics, because that was one of my questions as well as we were going through this process. So I don't have that email directly in front of me that outlines those impacts, but I'm sure he does. So I do think that it's important to recognize those things, and just so you know, we have had conversations with the, with the school district and others. They are aware that this is moving through the process. And I do think there's one other thing to mention. I believe Bill may have made some reference to this in his opening comments. This is one action to create a new area. There's a subsequent set of actions coming before you for future consideration to expand the original area. And so when we look at those, that 10% that you're talking about, Councilman, we need to look at all of it combined, because there's some areas that are donut holes and some expansion areas that maybe don't go quite as far, Councilman Ross, as you may have indicated along Rancho, but do pick up some areas that for a long time have been an issue in Ward Three and Ward Five. So just, there's a lot to be considered here today. And Bill, do you have that analysis-
And before you answer, please, if I could, what was the feedback from the different entities with whom you met?
Well, I mean, we've had an ongoing dialogue with the school district about all of this for the existing area as it relates to the request for an extension, as well as, as it relates to this expansion. To the best of my knowledge, they haven't lodged any complaint or raised a level of concern at this point, mainly because of the presentation that Bill has shared with you that the area is flat and/or declining. I think there's some recognition that we all want the tax base to grow here, and that it's going to take some extraordinary measures to make that happen in some areas of the city. But, you know, we do need to work with them on an interlocal agreement, and that's something that we've been pursuing for a while. And so it may be that they're waiting to take that up in that discussion with the interlocal. What has happened in other states, and Scott and Bill may want to chime in here, is that oftentimes to mitigate impacts, if you know what they are, you, you work it out in a revenue sharing after the fact, based on performance, Councilman Beers, you know, that you actually achieve some enhancement. We haven't gotten to that level of the conversation yet, but I anticipate that that will be a part of that conversation in that interlocal. Right now, 9% will be set aside for school facilities. We helped lobby to get that passed at the last legislative session. So, you know, that's way more than they were ever getting out of redevelopment area. So it gives them more direct benefit right out of the chute, and so that's, I think, a great first step in mitigating impacts to schools with redevelopment. I may have answered more than you wanted to hear, but-
No, because I think it's important that whatever precedent or successes we've had in the past, barring something that comes up, would seem to lay the table for perhaps future success. So, but those dollars that Mayor Protem was talking about that might go off to Metro or wherever, we are sort of, in this proposal, flat in our tax base right now. As we freeze, does that mean zero, or it's just frozen at this level? It doesn't drop and not pay anything, correct? It stays where it is?
Correct. The, Mayor, the idea of freezing the tax base is important, not just to the agency, but the existing jurisdictions. We are not redirecting existing revenue from those jurisdictions. So it's only the new revenue from new development. And you asked, what impact does this have at the city? Just to give some specific numbers, for the current redevelopment area, this is before including any expansion in the current redevelopment area, we're budgeting for fiscal year 13, $11 million. The revenue projection, which we did for the new RDA Two, even in year 30, even if we have 1% incremental growth for a 30-year period, is $2 million. It's $2 million. So cumulatively, that would be $13 million, the cap by state law today, based on that 10% test, as we understand it, is $39 million. So we're well under the cap. $11 million, while it is significant to what we're doing with redevelopment, it's a small portion of property taxes collected throughout the city and certainly the metro area. So it's significant, but we think it's a worthwhile investment, and it doesn't adversely impact the other jurisdictions, because they are getting the existing revenue from that base.
Can we go down this way first, and then we'll come back? Or you want to go right back into the dialogue?
Just note, to clarify your last question, I think, I think, I'm still unclear. I think that if our revenue forecast in the budget holds true, which is that appeals of assessments that just took place over the next 10 months cause a 5% reduction in assessed value, if that's true, property tax revenue would go down for everyone. And then someday, presumably with the monetary policy that Washington has embarked on, inflation is inevitable, and so values will come back up. All of those increases will be shared by the normal recipient agencies, and it's only until we hit the level today essentially, or this weekend when we publish, that those other agencies wouldn't stop getting revenue they would otherwise get, and that revenue would go to the redevelopment agency.
Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Mayor. The, I stated some of my reasons why I think this is okay when we had our public hearing, which was well-attended and well-conducted, Your Honor. And at that point, we got a lot of information out into the public, but still, sometimes it's a good idea to repeat it, because, you know, repetition is the mother of learning, as one of my old high school teachers used to tell me, because that's how you remember why things work or don't work. Now, I first visited this battle 25 years ago up in the legislature, when we approved this, and it was the first redevelopment in the state, and we had the support of the business community, the chambers of commerce, the others, who, the only people that didn't like it at all were the county and the school districts. They've learned to live with this, of course, since it's been in effect for a long time. So I don't fear the future as far as other organizations which depend on property tax for their livelihood. But what this, what this will do is it takes your tax dollars and puts them right back into that same area they came from. You know, when you think about it, everybody pays in tax, and it goes into a great big pot, and then it gets spent according to the will, goodwill, frankly, of the members of the council and the staff of the council. And so it can go anywhere, but when you've got redevelopment monies, it's going to be spent where it was taxed. And, you know, under the, frankly, the balanced budget multiplier principle, that does work well for your community. Now, that doesn't remove some controversies that have occurred, like, for instance, probably the unwise use of, you know, the early days of the eminent domain powers, where you ended up with lawsuits costing the city a lot of money. But when I look at the hearing we had, and I don't see the building pact today, I don't sense an upsurge of opposition from Ward One. The representative of Ward One feels it is good, the, and I'm sensing that the voters do there. There may be some opposition here and there, but by and large, this is not, it's not something that's going to create a lot of stress and struggle in that district. So I'm inclined to think the people there support it, always with some exceptions. So based upon then that, and then also thinking about the experience in Ward Three, and looking at my colleague to the right, his experience in Ward Five, it seems like it's working, that, you know, we have a meeting and we are able to find funds directly to put right back into those streets, right back into those neighborhoods, because the tax money was generated right there. And so I think that means it works, and I'm sure it's not without some controversy, but on the other hand, municipalities have learned a lot about how to manage it. The voters have spoken since the initial legislation was passed. The legislature has modified the powers of the local governments to make sure that abuses can't occur, at least to the great extent people are put on warning, they better not abuse things. So I think what you see here is now an acceptance of redevelopment, a general public acceptance of it. And of the specific nature, I think in Ward One, there must be a general acceptance. So I will support Councilwoman Tarkanian's proposal, as I think it makes sense. And obviously, you won't see a benefit immediately, nor will you see a subtraction from taxes in other areas immediately. That, that takes a long time. And I say, to beat this bush a little bit harder, I've got to tell you that it took 20 years to see anything in Ward Three downtown. It took a long time. So you're planting the seeds today for a harvest that's going to come in a long time from now, but, but it can and it will. But if you don't start now, you'll never get there. So I say I'm going to go ahead and support it for those reasons, and I'm very respectful of the thorough examination that my former Senate colleague, Councilman Beers, has put this through. He's put it to a test of his own, and he feels it's coming up wanting, but not radically wanting. I think he's worried about it. On the other hand, I think I can go ahead and support it, and with the understanding, I'm sure that, you know, nothing is forever. So if you find abuses, you find mistakes, you fix them as you go along. So I'm going to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, and Councilman Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor. And Councilman Coffin, you took some of my sound bites. I believe you were looking at my notes as far as some of the things that you shared just now, so I won't be redundant. But I will say this, Mayor and Council, that 15, 20 years ago, our predecessors sat right here and had to make a philosophical decision, having looked at the city of Las Vegas as a whole, and in particular, in the downtown community, and they had to make a decision. They had to vote as to whether or not they were going to establish a redevelopment area. Why? Because something was taking place in the downtown that that council at that time felt that, one, I can only imagine that they didn't like, and they didn't care to have their downtown community look and behave the way in which it was. Moving fast forward, you, just a short 12 years ago, another council came on board under the reins of an RDA, not really knowing what to do with it, but recognized that there was some issues taking place in the downtown community, once again, whether it be riddled with crime, decay, boarded-up buildings, and should I dare mention, an old rail yard that I played in as a little boy? Okay? That council at that time made a decision under the RDA, because there were some ideas, I wouldn't say that there was a vision in place at that particular moment, but there were some ideas as far as what they thought that they can do with certain areas in the downtown. Moving fast forward, 12 years later, you look around the area in which previous councils, two councils ago planted, in the words of Councilman Coffin, planted some seeds. They voted. And we're here tasked with the same task today, at a philosophical crossroad. The Symphony Park, which 12 years ago, we called it the 60, 61 Acres. And then your husband coined it the jewel of the desert. And today, we call it Symphony Park. The Smith Performing Arts Center, the World Markets, the Premium Outlets, the Malaski, Cleveland Clinic, and the other developments that will be coming on board, whether it be the Charlie Palmer and the other developments that we're continuing to work with to expand and beautify the downtown. The move here to 495 South Main Street really caught fire, the new RJC, the new RTC, the roadway improvements, the Mont Museum, corporations looking at downtown as a viable place to not only shop and live, but do business in the names of Zappos. The East Fremont, an area that, when I was a liaison, I worked very closely with Metro as a liaison to address a lot of the issues that were taking place with the motels and the boarded-up storefronts. Today, it is a very lively, lively corridor that the entire community and tourists alike have an opportunity to go and enjoy, not because of something we did, it was something that past councils did as far as coming together to make a philosophical decision as to what they wanted the city to look like. Now, understanding this, they knew when they cast that vote that they would not be here to celebrate the planting of the seed. We, as the new council, 20 years later, have an opportunity to enjoy the harvest. The decision that we make today as it relates to the expansion of RDA Two, unfortunately, none of us will be here to basically be a part of that harvest. But we have a philosophical crossroad as to whether or not we're going to stand just as our predecessors did, and basically say, what do we want our community to look like 20 years from now? And that's what we're talking about. We're talking about making a decision fiscally, morally, visually, what will we like our community to look like 20 years from now? And I'm going to do just as my predecessors did. I would say that some of them took a chance, because it was the unknown, but I want to thank them for taking that chance. And so therefore, I will put our RDA up against any RDA in the country as far as the positive developments that we have been able to bring forward into the city of Las Vegas and really turn the downtown around, and not only the downtown, but inside the neighborhoods, because dare I fail to mention what has transpired inside of the Enterprise Park, right at the corner of Lake Mead and Martin Luther King, the most beautiful Martin Luther King in the nation, right in the heart of a community, the historical West Las Vegas community. We have the new fire station, Mayor, that we just opened a month ago, two months prior to that, the MLK Health Center, and of course, all of the other amenities that are there, such as the police substation, the FBI headquarters, the Urban Chamber, and the incubator, and the developments that will be breaking ground a month from now, with the grocery store, Dollar General coming in, and also the other developments that we're working on, such as the Sanford Clinic, Children's Clinic, that we're in constant discussions with. So these are all votes that our predecessors voted on 20-plus years ago in order for us to have or be in place in order to really take advantage of the RDA today, as we discuss RDA Two. And then there was- And then, there will still be more discussions as it relates to the expansion of RDA One coming forward. Just as Betsy mentioned, such as some of the doughnut holes that are, were missing from RDA One. Some of you may not understand as far as why those doughnut holes exist. Well, Councilman Beers, they exist because a lot of the residents at that time were concerned about eminent domain. I mean, it was great discussions. We had countless neighborhood meetings under the leadership of former Councilman Lawrence Weakley as it relates to what should be in the RDA and what should not. And therefore, a lot of the residential properties chose not to be in because they were afraid of the eminent domain. But what the previous council did, and Mayor, was chose to design a resolution that basically said, we choose not to participate in eminent domain. And that resolution is still on the books today. And I still believe that this council still feels that way. That that's not something that we want to basically toy around with. We want to work with the private sector. Where the private and the public sector get together in order to beautify and develop the community as a whole moving forward as a joint partnership, not coming in as a taking. Because as our legal counsel very well know, there are cases on the books right now that the City of Las Vegas still remembers in the forefront as to the knock on the head that we received by doing that. And that's not something that I want to do moving forward. I want it to be a joint partnership moving forward. So, I understand it, Councilwoman, as far as what you're trying to accomplish because at least you're catching it before it's totally fallen. Councilman Coffin and I are still picking up pieces because a lot of areas that we represent have fallen. But things are getting better. But it takes a strong and conscientious effort on all of our parts, from the private sector to the public sector, to basically join forces in order to really turn communities around, to make them great, to make them communities that we are proud to live in and call home. Because there is a lot of great City of Las Vegas residents, Clark County residents, North Las Vegas residents, Henderson residents. When they go away, they basically say, we live in Las Vegas. And there's a pride about that. There's a culture about that. And I believe that we have an ability and we have a chance right now to make that stronger than ever, to really make it the great city that we all have come to live, learn, and enjoy. So, therefore, Councilwoman, I will be standing with you shoulder to shoulder on this vote because the vote that we cast today, it's not for you and I. It's for future council representatives to really go and cut those ribbons and really celebrate the decision that we cast today. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. McAnallen, are you here on this item? Is the Chamber of Commerce here on this item? Do you mind, Mayor, if I have him approach the microphone?
Yes, Councilman Ross, this was the item that we testified on at the beginning in public comment.
Okay.
And could you restate your name and your organization, please?
Yes, Mayor, Brian McAnallen, M.C., capital A.N.A.L.L.E.N. And I'm the Vice President of Government Affairs with the Las Vegas Chamber of Commerce.
And I ask you that specifically, and thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to bring him down specifically because, Brian, I'm a member of the Chamber. And this has been in discussion for how long, Mr. Arndt? A couple of years we've been talking about this? I have not been approached by anyone in the Chamber. I have not been approached by any businesses that are part of this new area for the Redevelopment Agency. And goodness sakes, we are all accessible. I have not heard one comment from any of them except Mr. DiBella with DiBella Flowers and Gifts when he came down here in full support of this. I'm challenged and would recommend to you and any other members of the Chamber to please contact us as councilmembers when you see an agenda item that may give you grief or give you some concern. Same to the sign industry in regards to our temporary sign ordinance. You know, last-minute stuff, this is the first I've heard any consternation from the Chamber on this, and I wish I'd have heard it sooner. But I don't want to put you on the spot either. But I'm just, that's what I wanted to let the mayor, let me say this morning, but she wouldn't let me.
If I could clarify my comments, I think I testified this morning that the Chamber is in favor of the concept and what the RDA Two is setting about doing. We have heard from some of our members, and I would tell you that some of our members have reached out to us and said the only thing they received were a couple postcards. So, many of them had questions about this as well. And that was another reason why we encouraged some outreach, not only to just those owner, business owner members within that area that had received postcards or that had been aware of this, but also to do some future outreach to those businesses that are leaseholders within that area. Because I, my assumption is, our belief is, that if postcards were mailed to the business owners to engage in this dialogue, then maybe that did not trickle down to the leaseholders. And many of those are members of our business, our business community and certainly the Las Vegas Chamber as well. So, I just wanted to put that out there that I believe as we go forward, we as a community, you as councilmembers, we as the business community, and certainly the staff, need to do everything we can to try to educate our entire community on the impacts that this will have as we move forward. Certainly, in RDA One, I think there's been a lot of discussion about that and the businesses down there understand how that's helped and moved things forward. And the discussion of growing that from the 3900 acres or whatever that's a part of that RDA One to expanding that in the future is all part of that. What, where I was critical in my comments earlier today was on the business impact statement. And, you know, it's a two-page document that has seven points on it. It's dated July 2, 2002. For whatever reason, I only saw this the other day myself and have expressed to certain staff members that we as the Chamber have a very, have a policy and a concern about business impact statements in general in the way that they are drafted. So, my comments are more to that process and to this particular business impact statement, not necessarily criticizing the issues around RDA Two in its entirety. But I do believe that part of the problem is, and one reason why you're not hearing from more businesses affected by this, is because we do have a business impact statement that has seven points to it. Six of those, the response by, on the statement is not applicable. And only one under item number two where it says beneficial effects. The one, the one piece listed on here says, possible opportunities for participation in redevelopment projects. And I would submit that as a business, if you get this business impact statement, you may not know. And if you read this, it's not going to tell you how it impacts you. And that's what we were trying to express today, Councilmen. So, I apologize if my comments were not clear in that short time I had in public comment earlier, so thank you.
No, and I'm grateful that the Mayor, what, you come down and say that because I think that's important. But we are fully accessible. And I don't think, and any of our members, and Brian, I want to say this too. I think we're part of the business community too. We're not just councilmembers. We care about what's happening in this city and want the economics to just rock and roll down the road, back to prosperity. That's what we're here for. So, we're part of that equation of being, of helping our businesses be successful. Did you want to comment, Mayor, before I?
Well, I did. I just would encourage you again, always to be in touch with Mr. Arndt and EUD and certainly with Scott Adams.
Yeah.
And make sure that that line of communication is open because they're not going to continuously give us tons of paperwork or bring us to meetings because we have so many fingers in the pots. But it would really help if you would work closely with Mr. Arndt and Mr. Adams. I think that's critical.
And I think also, us too. I mean, we're only a phone call away and you know how proactive we are in our community and in the City of Las Vegas, so don't hesitate to reach out to us. But that's our business vehicle right there. That's our business guy. That's our guy that's helping us get, helping our businesses get to where they need to be. And you're part of that equation too. So, we want to work together. Anything we do in the city, new ordinances, new changes, the expansion of the RDA, we do this. We just don't think of these, brainstorm these ideas and say, hey, let's go out and do this. We want the community to be inclusive in those discussions. So, everyone sees the benefit of it. And, Mr. Arndt, I don't know how you want to address this, but I, Councilman Beers's thoughts are a concern to me. How do we not make this document look, thanks, Brian, make this document look like it's eminent domain? How do we do that?
We already have a resolution to that though, don't we, on record?
Yeah.
We do, so.
Councilman, if I could just real quickly address the other comment.
Okay.
We value the Chamber as a partner. We did meet with them last Thursday at their policy committee. I think the Chamber is a resource that we need to use more. They have better reach in the business community than we do.
I'm not going to disagree.
You know, after this meeting, I definitely want to sit down with Brian and see how, you know, even if we send a notice out to every business owner, if it's from the voice of the Chamber, which is the voice of the business community, we do get better turnout, we get better participation. So, we have had a dialogue with the Chamber, so they have engaged us at the staff level and I want to make sure that you are aware of that and that the council, that was on the record. So, we do value the Chamber's support and I think in these formal notices, we can do better. And certainly, getting the Chamber to help with all those formal meetings is going to be important. Second point as far as eminent domain.
Could I interrupt just for one second?
Yes, Mayor.
Too, a lot of the ownership's out of state. So, you're dealing with renters or leases as well as out-of-state ownership. So, to make sure that we are dealing with occupants as they are currently as well as the ownership that may be Wyoming or California as well. I know we deal with that a lot.
Correct. The second question you had, Councilman, was eminent domain. We have adopted that policy. For the record, the policy was adopted per council resolution R-A3-2006. It was adopted in 2006. That's where we look to you for policy. We have not used eminent domain in my tenure with the agency for private-to-private. Personally, I think that's bad policy. I don't think it's needed. We really look to you for direction. We're following the direction of that resolution. It is, it still is in state law. And a lot of our documents, as Councilman Beers correctly identified, mirror what's in state law. So, we look to you for that policy. The current, your current staff doesn't feel that it's needed. It is in state law and a lot of the documents before you today mirror state law. So, that's something, we certainly look to you for policy guidance as long as that resolution's in effect. We have that for, it has that force. Even if it were removed from the plan, a future council could go back and amend it. So, really, I think it really falls top-down from state law and we look to you for guidance for that setting policy. We have, I would mention, just as an aside, introduced a lot of transparency and accountability elements into how we do redevelopment. And we're even working with our legislative team to manage up to the state and the legislature saying, we think this is good policy. Not only is it not good enough for, not only is it good for the city, but we think it should be redevelopment policy throughout the state. So, we're looking to put that into redevelopment law. And again, we look to you for policy direction on that issue.
Well, and given that, Mayor and councilmembers, given that, Mr. Arndt, this is, has a much bigger picture to it. This has a statewide influence to it at the end of the day. And correct me if I'm wrong, I think you reported a couple of weeks ago in one of our previous council meetings, you know, for every $1 of public investment we make in redevelopment, we get about $18 back in private investment?
Councilman, that's correct for a specific program, the visual improvement program.
Okay.
Other programs have had smaller ratios, but overall, it's varied over the last few years between 10 to 1 private-to-public and 12 to 1 private-to-public.
I mean, nationwide, that is phenomenal. Where else do we see that kind of return on investment when it comes to redevelopment agencies? I, and I don't think you have an answer for me, do you?
We studied it back a few years ago in conjunction with one of the legislatures. And I think San Diego has done a good job and they were, I think, at a, probably at a range of eight to one. So, we haven't done a real intensive study to see how it compares nationwide, but we're pleased with our track record. We want to have a, we want to have a good investment policy moving forward.
Mr. Black, did you want to key in on that? Did you want to say something on that?
I would just, Scott Adams, Chief Urban Redevelopment Officer, I just kind of want to weigh in here and state that our, the business impact statement is our routine document we use to normally handle a routine ordinance approval. In the case of a redevelopment area, either the establishment of a new one or the amendment to an existing one, the expansion, the statute goes further to explain how we have to go above and beyond our normal processes to notify the public. And we've done that. We have gone even well above the statute in terms of our obligation to notify property owners and businesses in the area. I think we've had public meetings, numerous public meetings that have been, had mixed attendance. Some were well-attended and some of them weren't well-attended. We've got, I'm glad to hear the postcards got in the hands of the individual property owners. That meant that the intent that the statute laid out above and beyond our normal ordinance approval process worked. So, I think, leading up to today, there was a very extensive process well beyond the statute to reach out into the community to make them aware of it.
Well, then, if I can, as we do this and you solidify our relationship as a redevelopment agency and as a city who's pro-business with the Chamber of Commerce, that you not just hang out with them every now and then, but at least have lunch with them once a week. And I'm challenging the Chamber to do the same. Constant contact with our urban development folks in that department because this goes hand-in-hand. I mean, we're trying to do everything we can as a local government to make this economy a better place for our residents in the City of Las Vegas. Thank you, Mayor, for your comments.
Thank you, and Councilwoman Tarkanian.
You know, we've had eloquent speakers here. I don't need to speak too much longer about all of this. It is a philosophical disagreement. I would like to point out something. And that was, when I was first elected to the council, I believed I cast early on two, three votes against RDA issues. And then, I began to watch and see what was occurring. And I spoke with Mayor Oscar Goodman and he told me about the vision that was involved in it. And then, we had a group, at the time, it was in my ward, that came forward to build the Allure. And I will tell you, what was the Allure before, of that land? Do you remember? It was wire fences, jigsaw fences. It was tumbleweeds against the fences, trash against the fences, a little dried-out plant here or there. It was a trashy place. And so, we did put Allure in through the RDA and look what we have there today and look what it's added. And as someone who's always watched out for what goes to the education and to the other social services, I saw that we were getting hardly anything at the Allure, at that property, for schools or anything else. And yet, once we got the Allure going, we started getting some good tax income back on it. And we found that, oh my goodness, I'm forgetting all of this. I waited all this time and I'm forgetting what I was going to say.
Anyway, it's fully occupied.
It's fully occupied, but what I'm.
And you're getting your money.
And we're getting our money back. But also, the district, the school district now gets half of what we get, the 18 percent. They get nine. So, they're getting more money. So, I can't see what is not good about this, and that's what happened. I sort of became a convert on this. And I saw what was happening in Wards Three and Five and I saw the vibrancy that was coming with that. And I just thought it was important to try and stop what I saw. A Macao that's going out to Summerland, that was the oldest Macao, the best restaurant we had in that area at Decatur and Charleston, going out to Summerland. We have other groups who have left too. I saw all of this occurring and I saw places that if you drive by, maybe you don't see some of the problems. Maybe you don't see the dirty-soiled diapers that are thrown in a lot or that people are fighting against or people are trying to pick up. But I could see, and because I've lived there that long, as many of us have in our city, you know the feel. It's just like Carolyn said, the feel is there. We're sliding down and down and down. Now, I just think this is critical for Ward One. And maybe, you know, there are wards that don't have these problems, but we have them. And I just want to say that I think there are public health problems there that are caused by what's happening. I think there's blight there that is coming more and more strongly because of problems that are there. And I think that we can stop this now and not have to go where my two competitors here mentioned they started from. So, I've said this many times, it's only been almost three full years since we started on this. We have had so many meetings and some of the cards that people get, by the way, are cards inviting them to meetings. So, we have tried very. So, we have tried very hard to reach out, and you know, I don't want us to end up a dump. I want to be proactive, as Ross said. I want us to be proactive and get that stopped. So, I'm just going to move now to approve item 48.
I want to make sure you're on the right number. It's been a while. All right, we have a motion on agenda item number 48, redevelopment.
Mayor Goodman.
Oh, okay.
Is that motion to include a, as a First Amendment, the removal of those three parcels that have been requested for removal?
Oh, yes.
According to the changes, right?
According to all the changes that have been made, which aren't very many, considering the length and breadth of every, all of this, and the fact that we had so few that questioned, and we had so many meetings and so much material mailed out. So, I would include those parcels, yes.
Thank you.
Do we need to put that in the record now?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that that was part of the motion, because we need to prepare a new map, which I understand has already happened, and a new legal description. That may delay the actual ability to publish, but it will be shortly. If it doesn't happen this weekend, it will be shortly after this weekend.
Thank you, Mr. Stee. Okay, so that's all right.
So, my motion is to approve item number 48 with the changes that have been added on that one large piece of property, which includes three separate lots.
That's Saharan Rancho.
Yes.
That's the only one. Okay, is that the only one? Yes. All right, there's a.
Excuse me, does that make it a First Amendment though?
Yes.
Yes, that's First Amendment.
First Amendment included.
Thank you. All right, there's a motion. Please vote. And please vote, and please post. The motion carries. Thank you very much. We will move, thank you, Mr. Art. We will move on to item number 49, Bill Number 2012-34. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Mr. Stee, please.
Bill Number 2012-34, in ordinance to amend the Unified Development Code to adjust the method of calculating handicap parking requirements in certain types of parking lots, to parallel the method of calculation provided for in applicable ADA standards, and to provide for other related matters.
Any comments, questions on this motion, this item? If not, Councilman Barlow, do you wish to make a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to move to follow steps recommendation for approval sub shall conditions.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote, and please post. Thank you. Motion carries. Let's move on to item number 50, Bill Number 2012-35. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. Bill Number 2012-35, in ordinance to amend the Unified Development Code to update and streamline the process for the approval of signage by the Downtown Design Review Committee, adjust the eligibility requirements for service on the committee, and provide for other related matters.
Thank you very much. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to make a motion?
Move for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve item number, agenda item 50. And motion carries. We'll move on to agenda item 51. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to, oh, excuse me, Bill Number 2012-36. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Please.
Bill Number 2012-36, in ordinance relating to the Downtown Centennial Plan, expanding the boundaries of the plan area, creating a new industrial district within the plan area, setting forth the goals of individual districts within the plan area, and providing for other related matters.
Thank you very much. Councilman Barlow, do you have a motion?
Move for approval.
Thank you. This is a motion, and please vote, and please post. Number, item number, oops, sorry, posting along. Thank you. Motion carries. Item number 52 has been abayed to the 5th of September. Item 53, Bill Number 2012-38. Boy, Councilman Barlow, you're working so hard. Do you wish to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Bill Number 2012-38, in ordinance amending ordinance number 3992, as amended by ordinance number 5520, relating to the City of Las Vegas, Nevada Special Improvement District Number 707, Summerlin area, authorizing the execution and delivery of Second Amendment to the Development and Financing Agreement related thereto, ratifying action taken by city officers towards such amendment, and providing other matters related thereto.
Thank you, Mr. Stee. Mr. Barlow, Councilman, do you wish to make a motion?
Yes, move for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion, and please vote, and please post. Mr. Barlow, Councilman, you have to vote on your motion. Thank you. And please post. And motion carries. On to agenda item 54. Items 54 through 58, bills 2012-28 and 2012-29, and 2012-2039 through 2012-41 are eligible for adoption at a later meeting. We will move on to new bills.
Bill Number 2002-42, 2012-42, in ordinance adopting the most recent version of the minimum records retention schedules for local governments in Nevada and providing for other related matters. Bill Number 2002-2012-43, in ordinance granting to Ecare Nevada Inc., a corporation organized and existing under the laws of Nevada, a non-exclusive franchise for a telecommunications service within the corporate limits of the City of Las Vegas, subject to and in accordance with that certain franchise agreement entered into between the City of Las Vegas and Ecare, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto.
We will move on, just checking these bills for one second, please. 59, 60, and 42 and 43. Tuesday is September 4th or 5th? Okay. Oh, right, correct. Okay, we will move on to 61, which is closed session, and I don't believe there.
Excuse me, Mayor, you need to assign the bills to recommending committee.
Oh, okay, that's what I was looking for. Okay, so item 59 and 60 will be assigned then to our recommending committee, Councilman Barlow, Anthony, Councilman Barlow, and Councilman Coffin. Thank you very much. And now, we will recess, no close session, and it is 12:15. Mayor Pro Tem, what's a good time to come back?
1:00.
1:15? Hold on.
45 minutes.
Okay. How is 45 minutes, everybody?
1:00.
Councilman Beers? 1:00?
1:00.
Everybody? We'll be back here at 1:00. Thank you very much. Checking the time, 1:04, sorry, four minutes late. Okay, cell phone off? Alrighty. So, moving along, we are on item, agenda item number 62 for possible action. Any items from the afternoon session? The council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken table or withdrawn or held in abance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Ross has asked that item 83 and item 87 be pulled from one motion, one vote for discussion.
Okay, now that was 80, 83?
And 87.
87. Okay. All right, therefore, may, I don't see anything there, okay. May I have a motion, then?
Okay, that will be my motion.
So, 83 and 87 will be held, correct?
Pull forward.
Pull forward. Okay, there's a motion, and please vote, and please post. Okay, public hearing. This is agenda item number 63, for possible action to consider a request for a waiver and/or reduction of fees totaling $1,872 in out-of-pocket costs, $2,450 in failed inspection civil penalties, and $58,050 in daily civil penalties for a total of $62,372 recorded against the property at 224 Antelope Way. Property owners, Bank U.S. National Associations, TSR. This is in Ward One, Councilwoman Tarkanian's ward. This is a public hearing which I now declare open. Is the representative or property owner present?
Yes, my name is Grace Kim, and I'm appearing on behalf of the property owner.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. And Mr. Bowles.
Good afternoon, Mayor members of the City Council. Before I review the case with you, I just want to let you know that we had a little glitch in the preparation of the agenda item. The appellant had a letter attached to their application for waiver, and it inadvertently wasn't included in your agenda packet. I placed that at your dais. It's got a cover letter for item 63, and then there's a letter attached to that.
Okay.
From a company called Altisource, dated March 26, 2012. The main cross streets of this property are West Cliff and Rainbow. This property is a foreclosure. In the way of background information, in this particular case, the property owner was deceased. The family members decided to let the property go into foreclosure, which it did. The bank was not in possession of the property at the time. at the time that the city commenced and did the abatement work. After we did the work, but before the lien was filed, the bank then took possession of the property. With that, the case was opened on March 22, 2010, and the abatement work was completed on October 23, 2010. The abatement work consisted of removal of refuge, waste, high grass, weeds from all areas of the property. The city's out-of-pocket expenses in performing that work was $1,872. The total late fees and civil penalties are $60,500. For a total of all costs, late fees and penalties, is $62,372. The council approved those costs and fees as a lien against the property at your May 18, 2011 city council meeting. The property value per Zillow as of July 25 of this year is $104,200, and staff requests that the council deny the waiver.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing, and I would, again, would you like to address this issue before we go to the comments and who you represent? And if you'd speak into the microphone so we can be sure to hear.
Yes, good afternoon again, members of city council. My name is Grace Kim, appearing today on behalf of the present owner of the property, U.S. Bank National Association. We understand that a lien was assessed against this property for nuisance, and since the time the property owner became aware of the lien and the nuisance, they have remedied the violations. And if you will note the letter of March 26, all of the violations have been corrected. At this time, there is a property preservation plan. Every two weeks, there is an inspection of the property, and if there is any maintenance that needs to occur, that happens at the expense of the property owner. The present intent of the property is to sell it. I believe it was in escrow back in 2011 and continues to be held in there until this lien issue is resolved. The property owner understands that any hard costs incurred by the city must be paid and is willing and able to pay that cost. And we also understand that the council has discretion to waive up to 90 percent of the fees assessed as represented in the lien recorded in May 2011. We're requesting that the council exercise that discretion today so that the property may be sold.
And at this point, there is no buyer present or nothing's in escrow at this point?
I believe there is a buyer in the wings, but everything is at a standstill until resolution of this lien issue.
Okay. This is a public hearing. I think we're missing a middle microphone. So if you wouldn't, thank you, Mr. Bowes. If you would come right to your microphone, state your name.
My name is Anthony Harden, 123, Sir David. It's a bank, right? A bank owns the property? Okay, well, you know. Good luck.
Anyone else? Any comments, questions, statements? We ate too much lunch. Councilwoman Tarkanian.
I move that we reduce the fees, but maintain the $1,872 hard costs, the $2,450 of the other action, and 10 percent of the $62,000. Is it 58? Excuse me. He's right. I'm giving you a total. It's 10 percent of $58,050.
Assess them, then, 5,800 plus five?
Yes, which would be approximately 10 percent of the full bill that's down here. So, let's try it again. $1,872 in the hard costs, and $2,450 in failed inspection civil penalties, and 10 percent of the $58,050.
Okay, excuse me.
Oh, please.
If I may, I show that that totals being $10,372.
Right. That's it.
The mathematicians up here. I have not heard a word. I hear from other council people. Oh, well done.
And that's approximately 10 percent of the full amount. Not exactly, but it's close to it.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's what I was trying to do.
Okay. There's a motion. We've had a public hearing, which is closed. So, please vote. And please post. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Kim. Thank you, Mr. Bowes.
Mayor, I'm sorry if I may. I forgot to interject that typically when the council's done these types of actions, you've imposed a condition that the full amount be paid within 30 days or reverse back to the full amount. My apologies for forgetting that.
Okay. Is your respondent able to do this within 30 days? Can we, do we have to undo?
You need to rescind and then you vote, ma'am.
Rescind and redo it. Okay. Councilwoman, would you rescind your previous motion?
I rescind my previous motion.
Which is on agenda item 63. So, there's a motion to rescind. Item 63 is voted. And please vote. And please post. That motion carries. Now, would you like to make a new motion? Councilwoman Tarkanian, please.
My new motion would be $1,872 in fees for the hard costs, $2,450 for the, excuse me, the failed inspection civil penalties, and $6,237 of the final full penalties.
Is that correct? No, I think those numbers-
Failed civil penalties and 10 percent of the $58,050 in daily civil penalties.
Okay, so if I may reiterate that. $1,872 out-of-pocket costs, $2,450 failed inspection civil penalties, and 10 percent of the $58,050 in daily civil penalties. And that due within 30 days.
Right. It's 10 percent of the $58,050, which would be $5,000.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Right. Okay, so then if there's a new motion, please vote. And please post.
Well, we'll do that, Mayor.
It's already done.
Well, I haven't voted yet, so she hasn't posted.
Oh.
The reason why we rescinded it was because the councilwoman didn't include the 30 day.
Correct.
So she didn't say that.
So I will now also say, in that motion, do we have to pull back the votes?
No, 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 we're fine.
Okay. Then I want to make sure that we understand it has to be paid within 30 days.
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay. I think I tailed yours in repeating it with that, but that's clarity. We love to be clear. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, now, another faux pas. We have to rescind, Councilman Mayor Protem, item number 62 because we have a correction there. That item 62 is asking council staff or applicant for stricken, tabled, withdrawn, or held in abeyance items for a future meeting to be acted upon. So the first thing we have to do is rescind what we passed.
I think if there's any items that are stricken from this agenda, do that first, then the consent items. And then we're going to go to the rescission of those previous items from the last council meeting. Does that make sense?
No.
Okay.
Isn't it easier just to go ahead, rescind what we passed, and put in the correct one? That's just starting. Right now, we start off with 62, rescind it because we did it wrong, then go back and pass it with 105 instead of 83 and 87. Then we'll move through the rest of the agenda. When we get there, we're there.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So Mayor Protem, rescind your motion for-
Okay, I'll make a motion on item number 62 to rescind my motion.
Okay. There's a motion. Wait. Agenda item 62 in total. Okay, we're going to vote that. And we're going to post that. And now we're going to have a new motion. Who are you missing?
I'm a little confused here.
May I interject and help Ryan understand this a little better? I think we got a little ahead of ourselves. On the one motion, one vote, I wanted two items pulled forward so we could hear them. But we did that under 62, where 62 is clear that we either strike, table, withdraw, or hold in abeyance any items, not pull them forward to here. Does that make sense? Because the two items I wanted to pull forward and hear on one motion, one vote.
And which one are you pulling forward?
We pulled 83 and 87 forward, and those were incorrect. It's actually 105.
That's why we're rescinding them.
That's why we're rescinding what we did in 62. Okay. You with me now?
I'm with you.
Okay, now, we're missing whom on the vote? Who are we missing?
Coffin.
Okay. Everybody's voted except Councilman Coffin. Would you please vote to rescind on agenda item 62? Okay, now we can post. Okay, let's try this all over again. Mayor Protem.
Well, action's 105, right?
105.
No, we don't. When we get to-
The total consent agenda, we will do that then.
No, when we get to one motion, one vote, we'll do it then.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Scott, for clearing-
Okay, so there's nothing here? Okay. No, now we have to vote on this one. Item number 62?
We do, so you can move on.
Oh, okay. Got that. All right, now we did 63. Good for us. Now we're on consent. And here we are. Aren't we lucky? Okay. I don't know what was in the food today. We just had tacos. Spiked tacos. Weird. Okay. But the only one that's really quiet is way down at the end there. Councilman Beers. Okay. Items, excuse me. Item 64 through 66 on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and are recommended for approval by the Department of Planning. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, item 64 through 66?
It's all moved.
Thank you. There's a motion? Please vote. And please post. Okay, motion carries. We now go on to guess where we are. One motion, one vote. Okay. Items 67 through 88, RQR 45110, RQR 45111, RQR 45113, RQR 45122, RQR 45125, RQR 45133, RQR 45330, RQR 45336, RQR 45337, RQR 45360, RQR 45362, RQR 45363, RQR 45374, RQR 45461, RQR 45464, RQR 45465, RQR 45466, RQR 45467, RQR 45468, RQR 45469, RQR 45470, RQR 45471. Were all heard at the August 1 council meeting. Due to a notification error, all of these items need to have that action rescinded and reheard as part of the one motion, one vote section of the agenda. These are all public hearing items which I now declare open. Is there anyone wishing to be heard concerning the rescinding of the previous action taken? He sat. Hearing none. Down.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone wish, and if there's anyone, there is none. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearings. Thank you. Is there a motion to rescind the previous action taken by the city council?
It's all moved.
Thank you. There's a vote, there's a motion, please. Please vote. Please post. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the one motion, one vote, rehear portion of the agenda. Whoops. Okay. Items 89 through 109, RQR 4511R, that 110, sorry. RQR 45111, RQR 45113, RQR 45122, RQR 45125, RQR 45133, RQR 45330, RQR 45336, RQR 45337, RQR 45360, RQR 45362, RQR 45363, RQR 45374, RQR 45461, RQR 45464, RQR 45465, RQR 45466, RQR 45467, RQR 45468, RQR 45469, RQR 45471. Were heard at the August 1st council meeting, and that action was just rescinded by the city council. We will now rehear these items. RQR 45470 will be reheared as a separate item, number 110. These are all public hearings which I now declare open. Is there anyone wishing to be heard concerning these items? And please come forward and state your name.
My name's Harold Barling. I live at 6164 Pine Villa Avenue, which is part of the desert Pine Villas condominium community of 194 units located at 6164 Alexander. That is next to the property that these hearings are on. First, I would like to say, I came here last week, and I was one that couldn't get into the hearing.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Excuse me, please, sir?
Do we know which one he's actually speaking on?
What, uh-huh.
83 and 87.
No, Mr. Harold, because we, if I may, Mayor.
Please.
Because we made the error last time, notice in the meeting, all those items were moved forward, the ones that the mayor just read in. They are 105 that you're concerned about, and agenda item number 110, which is on discussion, which we'll get to after this item. So Mayor Harold would like to pull forward off of one motion, one vote, 105, and then we can go ahead and vote on the rest of it. So Harold, if you just take a second, we can vote on the others.
I would, when I couldn't get in, I walked around to the side to the staff, found the staff entrance, and showed my notice to one of your staff that was walking out. And instead of saying, "Well, it's closed. You'll have to come back tomorrow," he was kind. He took me up to the city clerk's office. He met with Stacy Campbell. They took a copy of the notice and my information. And I got a call the next morning from Councilman Ross's office before nine o'clock telling me about the rehearing. And I would like to commend and thank those two people from the city clerk's office. I didn't get the gentleman's name, but Stacy Campbell would know that gentleman's name. Now, on the issue.
If you'll hold on, at this point, we have to pull item 105 forward first.
Okay.
So if you'll hold on, please.
Yes.
All right. So, on our rehearing consent agenda, is there a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I will make a motion to approve 89 through 109 as one motion, one vote, and we'll pull item 105 for a later discussion at your discretion.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I might.
Where are you?
I'm over here. I had a resident who hand-delivered his postcard in opposition to item 104 and the companion item number 82. He just wanted to make sure that it was reflected in the record that he was opposed to item number 104. I just wanted to make you aware of that. The clerk has the postcard.
Okay, thank you very much. So there is a motion to accept this consent agenda and pull forward item number 105. So that is the motion made by Mayor Protem. Will you please vote? And will you please post? Have we done this? Okay. Attorney? Are we cool?
You're good, Mayor. Thank you.
We're on pass?
We're perfect, thank you.
Okay. And now we will go on to item number 105. Councilman, do you want to move forward with this? And then we will hear from Mr. Barley.
I think, Mayor, we just have to state that it's, we'd like to hear 105, RQR 45466, and open it up for public comment, I think.
Okay. Please, sir, go ahead. Please, sir, go ahead.
Again, my name's Harold Barling. I am the president of the condominium association of Desert Pine Villas, and I am here to represent our community of 194 units, which is adjacent to the property that this hearing is concerned with. When I bought my condo in 2000, that piece of property was a flat piece of property with a few trees up on the Rancho site of the property. Since then, it has been used as a dumping area for construction materials and has become an eyesore. I have some pictures that I'd like to present to the council.
I think, Mr. Fag, could you help, please, Mr. Barley, put these up on the screen? Thank you.
If you can, so we can put them over there. Right here. So. Well, I have, okay, I have two sets. What are these photos of the town? Just to hand, put some...
Is he ready?
Oh, basically, right. Basically, for you. This will show up on the TV screen. Okay, okay.
That's the first four. Should I now move to the next ones?
Remember, we just need the camera operator to move out a little bit.
Should I go to the next set of photos?
That, wait, give us a second, if you would, so we can see what you're talking about here. Okay, yes, please, go ahead. Why is that?
And Mayor, if I may, while Mr. Barley's doing that, Mr. Barley, it was Scott Weber from our IT department that helped you, so a shout-out to Scott Weber in IT. He's also the guy that helps me with my handheld when I break it, so.
There's two more that I'd like you to put up here particularly. I'd like you to notice in those two, the people that are walking on the sidewalk. Now, when I did buy the, my unit, as I said, it was a reasonable piece of property. It has now become an eyesore and is detrimental to the property values in our community. But, and I think Councilman Ross is familiar with this property and will be able to put his two cents in, but as bad as the problem is with the eyesore, is a more insidious problem, and that is that we believe, because there's an odor emanating from the property, that these day laborers that congregate on Jones Street are using the property for a toilet. It is very easy for somebody to walk onto the property in between piles of debris and trees and use it for a toilet unobserved. In fact, I think it's a reasonable assumption that that was chosen for that very reason. Now, while Jones Street west of Cheyenne is a very heavily-traveled street, as it comes up to Rancho, it becomes lighter and lighter, to where my estimation is, at where Jones intersects Rancho, there's 30 or 40 vehicles cross the intersection on Rancho to every one on Jones. And for day laborers who need to be seen to be hired to choose a area where it's less traffic, there must be a rational reason for that, and we believe it, just because they have the ability to use the property for a toilet. Now, our community has no problem with the sign company, but we do have a problem with the owner of that property receiving income from rental of that sign while maintaining an eyesore and a public health nuisance. Thank you, and if there's any questions, I'm available.
Very good points. Very good points.
Thank you.
Mr. Barley, thank you, if I may, Mayor. Thank you very much, Mr. Barley. This has less to do with the sign and the required review of the sign as it does with the condition of the property. And at this moment, I'm going to direct staff to first, of course, send code enforcement out to see what issues there are. We've had a lot of problems with the day laborers in that location for the past several years. And we're trying to deal with that to best of our ability. Mr. Fag, I would think, too, if we are having such issues with this property, and Betsy, plum me up if I get off course here, can we not require that property to be fenced and taken care of to keep the individuals off of it from, you know, either living in the desert there, hiding amongst the bushes, or using it to defecate?
That is correct. I believe that we do have the ability to do that. There are certain standards relative to dust control and things like that that do give us the ability to fence properties.
Since Mr. Barley's brought this to our attention, let's get on this right away for him and the benefit of his neighborhood.
I would like to see, I would like to see the council to put a contingency on the permit for this, that it would only last for a certain period of time that the council would give the owner to clean up the property.
Mr. Barley, we do that, and when they get notified, they're required to do, take some action within a certain amount of time. Now, you do recognize this RQR has nothing to do with actually the property owner, just with that billboard sign and that location. So you certainly could have called me, we could have taken this another direction instead of addressing it here at the council level, but I'm glad you're here anyway. And do apologize to you for two weeks ago showing up at 6:00.
We all make mistakes, no problem.
We do, we do, but I will get on it, and I appreciate you. Do me a favor, if you would leave your number with Mr. Fag, so I can get back to you and let you know what the results of our investigation will be, so you can inform your neighborhood. I like a little accountability.
If the gentleman could also leave the photos, too?
Yeah, Mr. Barley, could you leave the photos as well? Leave the photographs for us as well? We'll give them back to you.
I don't need them.
Okay.
So, it's publicly carried.
240 North 19th Street. Councilman Ross, are those vehicles serviceable that I saw in those, or are they junk vehicles?
Actually, Mr. Farlow, with the mayor's permission through the mayor, those vehicles are actually the sign company's vehicles working on the billboard sign. That billboard's been there, I think, since I was in high school, which I'm not going to tell you how long ago that was. But I'm very familiar with that neighborhood, Mr. Barley, as I grew up right over there by a couple of blocks from you, so I know this. Now, we'll get on it and get it taken care of as quick as we can with that.
So, number one, can it's not necessarily the same issue?
Is it the same issue? Okay, very good.
Different times of the same issue.
Okay, thank you very much for your help, Mr. Barley, and your concern for your community. Thank you.
And Mr. Barley, if, in fact, you have not seen something with, and what would we assume, Mr. Fag, would be a good response time to have this taken care of?
If it's done by nuisance abeyment, we need to at least give them 30 days, I believe, to clean up the property and address the issues, Mayor.
Okay. So if you've not heard, if you've not seen improvement by mid-September, will you please call Councilman Ross?
Thanks, Mr. Barley.
Thank you very much.
With that, Your Honor, and council members, I would move to approve agenda item 105, RQR 45466.
Thank you. There's a motion? Please vote. Yeah, we're doing well. Thank you. Motion carries. We will now move on to item 110, and this is a re-hear, as we just mentioned, and re-notification, RQR 45470, required review, public hearing. Applicant, CBS Outdoor, owner Michelle Arciardi, adjacent to the west side of Rancho Drive, approximately 250 feet south of Alexander Road, in Ward 6, Councilman Ross, and staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing, which I declare open, is the applicant present. Anyone wishing to be heard on item number 110? Hearing none. Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Mayor. This is adjacent to the same property, similar, adjacent to the other billboard on the different property owner. We'll also have nuisance abeyment go out there as well, Mr. Fag, and take care of that whole corner. On agenda item 110, RQR 45470, Your Honor, I move for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion? Please vote. Please post.
Brutal day. Brutal.
Didn't register. Mine didn't register either. Okay, thank you. Motion carries. We'll move on to item 111. ROC 45135, abeyance item, review of condition, this is a public hearing. Applicant owner, Argulis Centro Finleiar Cristiano, on 11.18 acres at 5355 Madre Mesa Drive. This is in Councilman Ward, Councilman Barlow's Ward 5. Staff recommends denial. Planning Commission recommends approval. This is a public hearing, and applicant, would you step forward and state your name, please? Whoops. Okay, you want to do that one more time, please?
Matt Cady.
And representing?
Argulis Fin, CFC.
Okay, Councilman Barlow?
Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Cady, you can present your case.
Are you guys able to see the graphics that I sent over? Okay, the one graphic you guys didn't, we didn't have digitally, is a completed site plan. I don't know if you could have the cameras zoom in on that. What we're asking for is for the southern and western, or eastern tree line border be held off till the second phase because of the site conditions make it relatively difficult to complete that now.
The entire, or just on?
Just this border. All the other landscaping is per plan, the building has been temporarily CO'd, everything else is identical. And I supplied some graphics showing what we intended the building to look like, and then also pictures showing that it's identical. So we plan on adhering to this, we just need a little bit of time to rework the ground.
Approximately?
We don't have a time, that's why we wanted to tie it into the second phase. The second phase, when we build the school, would dictate the rest of the parking lot would need to be done, so we would prefer just to do all the grading and landscaping on this border then, because right now, this is just a dirt area.
And is this a charter school, religious school, private school, public school?
Right now, it's just a church. We intend to make it our private school in the years to come.
Okay. Okay, Councilman?
Yes, Mayor.
And this is a public hearing, so we can do that as well, Councilman?
Yes. I've received notification from neighbors adjacent on the east and the south side of the property, and also, I believe it should be some information in the backup force as well for our purview. And so, the neighbors' concerns have been addressed by Mr. Cady, and I'm okay moving forward with the request of the delayed landscaping, although Mr. Cady hasn't stated when they anticipate Phase 2. I do understand from my conversation with him on yesterday is that half of the parcel where Phase 2 will be eventually developed has been fenced off.
Correct.
And they will continue to maintain the cleanliness of the site and make sure that it's free and clear of all debris throughout the process of this land being undeveloped.
Entirely correct.
Is that, is that correct?
Correct. It's, if you were to drive by now, it looks like one big parcel, so if there was any debris there, it wouldn't reflect good on us.
And what did you share with me as relates to the dust control issues that were, that were raised?
We have stabilized the outlying area and fenced it in, so it's, you can't walk on it, so with the stabilization there, it's fine. And then the two areas that are adjacent to the building, we put a hard surface, like a gravel, and dust control is okay with that, just because of the appearance. We wanted to make that look a little bit better. But the area that we're talking about along the southern and east area is fenced in and encapsulated completely. So we could pull the fence back to remove trash, but there's no public access to it.
But is the dust controlled with occasional spraying or something to hold down all that dirt?
Correct. As long as nobody walks on it, technically, the chemicals should keep the break on there, but if we were to drive over it, we would reseal it at that point.
Right. Okay. And in addition to that, the neighbors' concerns are making sure that the improvements are fully developed once Phase 2 began at some future date?
Correct, and they're all tied in together. I can't build either of the two additions without additional parking. I can't receive funding from the school until I receive a certificate of occupancy from the city, so there is kind of a check and balance.
Okay. Then, all of the concerns that I had, Mayor and Council, have been addressed, and so I'll leave it open for any additional questions or comments from the council.
Thank you. Mr. Fag, what was the reason for denial, please?
When the project was originally presented at Planning Commission, there had been concerns from neighborhood residents about having some type of a landscape buffer between the church and their properties. As Mr. Cady has stated, the neighbors have since acquiesced. They're more or less fine with the development as it currently stands, and so consequently, approval with the condition that we have placed upon it for the landscaping to be completed with Phase 2 should be adequate to address neighborhood concerns.
Therefore, your denial is lifted, assuming those adjustments are made?
Correct.
In Phase 2. Okay, this is a public hearing. Please come forward, state your name, make your comments.
Anthony Hodges, it said that it was, that planning lifted it, and so therefore, that means if they lifted it, then it's approval on the kind of staff, right? No, I'm telling him.
Planning, right. It was staff had originally denied it, but now, with the work that's been done, it is approved, and that condition would only happen in Phase 2.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from staff or questions? Yours?
Okay. With, having said that, I would move to allow for the, allow for the abeyance of Phase, I'm sorry, the landscaping waiver. I'll move to follow, I can't say follow staff's recommendation, but...
The if-approved conditions.
I'm sorry?
The if-approved conditions. So...
Move for approval...
With the if-approved condition.
With the approved conditions from planning. That will be my motion.
Okay. Whoops. There's a motion? Please vote. And please post. You're in business. Congratulations.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
All right, good luck to you.
Bye. Okay, we will read now in items number 112 and 113. Item number 112, GPA 45405, general plan amendment from PF, Public Facilities, to MXU, which is mixed use. And item number 113, Zone 45406, rezoning related to GPA 45405 from CV Civic to C2 General Commercial. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas for 1.46 acres at 310 South 9th Street. The Planning Commission and staff recommend approval of both items. These items are in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin, and public hearings, which I now declare open. Applicant present is the city. Is anybody speaking on our behalf?
Madam Mayor, that would be me.
Oh, you're lucky so, thank you.
Flynn Fag, Department of Planning. These two items go along with the items that you heard this morning relative to the sale of this property to a private owner. The property was previously Zoned CV Civic, which is for governmental uses primarily. In order to accommodate the uses that they're proposing, staff has recommended that we change the land use designation, rezone the property to C2 General Commercial. Please note, that will allow the office uses that are currently there to remain there and be in conformance with the zoning, and then the school that's proposed could be there in the C2 District by special use permit. So that will allow the scope of uses which the applicant intends.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard on this, please?
And the city, and the school, and it is in conjunction on this, on this particular piece of property?
This is the one that we heard this morning. What was that item number?
45 and 40.
45 and 40. 25, excuse me, and 40, the church.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard on these items? May I take them together or not, council?
You do them separately, Mayor.
Separately. Okay, is there a motion, Councilman?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor, and I want to say that as a substitute for comment on this, that the minutes should reflect reference to a full discussion and debate that was on the record for items 25 and 40 in the morning. So therefore, I now move for approval of item 112.
Thank you. There's a motion? Please vote. And please post. Motion carries and Councilman Coffin on item number 113, please?
If there's discussion first, no public debate, then if there is none...
No comment.
Then I will now move with the same comments, the minutes should reflect full discussion on this item taking place in the morning session on items 25 and 40 will explain what we do here. So now I move for approval on item 113.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote. And please post. Thank you, item carries. Thank you very much. And now we're on to item number 114 and 115. Item 114 VAR 45491, variance to allow 43 parking spaces where 70 are required. And item 115 SDR 45490, site development plan review related to VAR 45491 for an 8,650 square foot, two-story addition to an existing 12,600 square foot office building. The applicant owner is Foundation for an Independent Tomorrow. The project is located on 1.04 acres at 1931 Stella Lake Street. The Planning Commission recommends approval of both items and staff recommends denial of both items. These items are in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow and our public hearing items which I now declare open. The applicant I see is present and would you care to state your name, please?
Hi, I'm Janet Bluman. I live at One Hughes Center Drive in Las Vegas. I am the founder and CEO of Foundation for an Independent Tomorrow.
Thank you. And sir?
Robert Messiana, representing Foundation for an Independent Tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Do you want to make a present? Oh, wow. Go for it, if it's all right with you, Councilman.
This project is a second story addition to an existing facility that Foundation for Independent Tomorrow has. Because of increased demand for their services, we, they've run out of space and need to expand their facility. We don't have any room to expand horizontally, so we're proposing a second story addition. In order to accommodate the additional square footage, the city has worked with the Foundation for Independent Tomorrow to provide them with an off-site parking spaces that'll provide them with 28 spaces. But because the, the distance from this site to the remote parking exceeds what is allowed through the development code, it cannot be counted. So that's why the variance for the parking is being requested. However, with this lease agreement, the facility is going to be parked according to the zoning requirements. So we actually have 71 spaces available to us where 70 are required.
And it's not even leased. It's land that was through the city and Bill Arnn's office that was actually given to Foundation for an Independent Tomorrow, but it's co-located on the Nevada Health Center facility. And we agreed we would take the, the back parking spaces and so that's what puts it a little further away, but we are in fact not underparked. And, and I just, by the way, I have to thank Madam Mayor and the members of the City Council for making fit possible. I mean, you gave us the acre that we built on originally. In the last three program years, we've gotten 1,270 people into jobs.
Wow.
And when you take an increase, the, the amount by which their income increased and the amount by which their dependence on public assistance decreased, every year those, those clients from just three years will impact our economy by over $27.5 million. So we thank you because without you, we never could have done it. And now we are ready to go to the next step and build another 8,650 square feet and just keep doing what we're doing, trying to end unemployment one person at a time.
Just wonderful. Congratulations. I remember when you came to my office a year ago.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please, Councilman Ross.
The thanks goes to you for what you're doing for this community and I want you to recognize that as well as all of your staff and everybody down at Foundation for an Independent Tomorrow because I know what you do and I know the impact you had when I first got involved with the Workforce Investment Board. You guys make an influence, you make a difference in people's lives. So it's easy sometimes for us to sit up here, but it's you guys on the ground that are doing the hard, hard work and the heavy lifting, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Ross. That means a lot to our program director here and me. Thank you.
Where's your program director? And your name? Please come on up because this is why our city is so great and to know how dark the doors looked ahead of you and look how bright everything's turned out.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Jake McClelland. I'm the program director at FIT.
Wonderful.
My address is 8964 Stephanie Jean Court.
Congratulations to you. It is public hearing. I'd like to ask staff, why denial?
The reason for denial is because the code has specific requirements for off-site parking lots that this project does not meet. One of those is the distance. It has to be within 300 feet of the property that it's to serve. This parking lot is approximately 500 feet away. And then secondly, relative to the ownership of the property, it has to be in common ownership. What they actually have is a perpetual easement, so it doesn't quite meet the standards in our code. So for those reasons, staff has recommended denial. Otherwise, it's a lovely project.
Great, see, that's positive. It is a public hearing, which is open. Please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Can someone tell me in 25 words or less, what do these people do? It looks like they're doing marvelous job.
Ms. Bluman, please.
We do what's called workforce development. We take unemployed and underemployed Southern Nevadans and we help them figure out what the best vocational goal for them would be and then we help them overcome all their barriers and get a job.
Thank you.
And how many have you served thus far?
Oh, gosh.
Are you talking about recent this year or the last five years?
Well, let's say, let's start with this year.
We take probably 1,200 to 1,300 applications a year. So, so far this year, if you count the calendar year, about half of that, 500 to 600, or if you count from July 1st on, which is our program year, we're still a little bit early on in the process, so probably 100 or 200.
Awesome. Congratulations. Yes, sir, please come, state your name.
It's developing jobs.
Name?
Anthony Hodges. This sounds like it's developing jobs and anything that's developing jobs is good for the benefit of everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, there filling jobs, actually. It's wonderful. It's putting people to work, which is what we so need. Okay, Councilman Barlow, how we, comment from Councilman Beers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just going to suggest that if the reason that we're having to pull these people up here is that we don't have a permanent easement aside from next to an owned parking lot in our ordinance, perhaps we might consider changing our ordinance.
Direction taken.
Thank you.
He is not only quick, but he's coming with lots of new ideas. So, Councilman Barlow?
Yes, Mayor, thank you so very much and Ms. Bluman, thank you so very much for really doing a great job with employing so many people in a very tough economic time that we're in right now. When you came to me initially with the proposal to go two stories, it was very difficult to embrace it because of the lack of parking. And luckily, the MLK Health Centers came along with the development that we just opened and cut the ribbon on to approximately two months ago, Mayor. And we were able to forge a relationship, partnership, if you will, whereas you will have an opportunity, FIT will have an opportunity to basically move forward with this development for the second story. But Councilman Ross, you're, you're 100% correct in the sense that the great job that FIT is doing in the community is, is something that is to be commended because when we came to them, the Nevada Health Center, to host the job fair, Janet jumped right on top of it, she and her entire staff, and, and basically said, well, we can open our doors. Why don't you host the job fair inside of our facility? That's what we do. And it worked out perfect because the MLK Health Centers were, were able to hire their employees, quite a few of their employees who are currently working today, who were on the unemployment roll, who now are sufficient and working towards bringing their family up, one paycheck at a time. And so therefore I want to thank you for opening your doors and being a great community partner and I'm delighted to cast a vote in favor of, of moving forward with the waiver because of the great job that you're doing and your willingness to basically partner with other entities that you had no idea who they were. But just the giving spirit of, and the vision of what your organization is about basically speaks for itself. So having said that, I would move for approval of item 114, subject to all conditions.
Thank you, Councilman. There's a motion, item 114, on the additional parkings, to allow for the 43 parking spaces, which we understand you'll have more. Subject to all conditions, please vote. And please post. Motion carries. Councilman Barlow?
And on item 115, the site development plan review, I'm not sure if you had an opportunity to talk about what's actually taking place on the second story. Why don't you just give us a complete scope of what's taking place and, and share with the community all that will, will take place underneath the new and improved second story?
Wonderful. I'd love to. Councilman Barlow, thank you for hosting that job fair. It was really very successful and we were delighted to get people into, to those jobs and we had incredible turnout that day. What we learned as we were moving into this difficult economy, you know, when we started 15 years ago, it was pretty easy to get, you sent people to technical school, they could get a job. As the economy has gotten worse, there are more and more people applying for fewer and fewer jobs. And now employers can and do require that clients come able to use the computer, able to answer a business telephone with financial literacy. And we found that they, our clients lacked a lot of those basic literacies and we started teaching it. And in our current facility, we have one 12-person computer lab where we teach it. It has been so incredibly successful that we have grown it and grown it and now the entire second story will really be an education department. We have, I think we have something we can give to you. We have five classrooms, two tutoring area, a mentoring area, a mock interview area, conference rooms. And what we're going to do is turn this into a, at least a five-day-a-week, six-hour-a-day education center where we can teach the people of Southern Nevada. You know, the, the woman who has never used a computer, who has never been exposed to a computer, she can't even go to one of the computer schools and take computer classes to get her skills better because she's scared to death that she's going to break the computer if she touches the mouse. And that's where we start. We start, our intro to computers is, this is a mouse, you know? So it's something that we believe is the next step in workforce development and how we're going to really get people to jobs. Councilman Ross, thank you for the financing through Workforce Connections because it's made it possible for us to really expand our scope.
How, do clients pay a fee?
No.
And how are you funded?
We are, well, we were privately funded for 10 and a half years and we still go after those. I still write the proposals, lucky me. And, but we also now are Workforce Connection service providers and so we, we are funded through them and it's really allowed us to expand our services. This building, by the way, is being built by a combination of money, the property from the city, money from the county and a grant, the cornerstone grant is from the Department of Commerce.
Wonderful. Congratulations.
It's a...
A good coming together.
Absolutely.
And do you, I know how busy you are and I know your staffing, but do you do follow-up? And is there an open door for anybody who's out there that you've placed to come back for more help?
Absolutely, yeah. We follow them for a minimum of one year after they're placed into employment to make sure that they're able to keep the job and provide whatever follow-up retention services that they may need, whether it's some transportation assistance for the first few months while they get caught up on their bills or anything like that. We just had a gentleman, he was back when I was the case manager, five years ago. He was a truck driver, worked for three years and just got recently, got laid off. He called me about two months ago and he's looking for another job. So we hooked him up with a carrier, a state-to-state carrier, so he's back to work. So anytime anybody loses their job or they need additional assistance, they're welcome to come back and we'll work with them as best we can.
And how do those who are seeking employees find you if they don't know about FIT? Where are you connected?
Well, we, we try to do what we can to reach out to employers. We certainly go out and speak at, at places of employment. Of course, we do the rapid response and all that sort of thing. But we, when we have a client in a profession or who's in a vocation, who's ready for a job, we, the case manager is part of their deal and we have two job developers who contact the employers and say, we've got somebody here, can we send them over? And then we do mock interviews with them so that when they get over there, maybe they'll, you know, have a chance of getting hired.
Yeah, and actually part of our federal funding through the Workforce Investment Act, there are hiring incentives for employers. So if you're looking to hire someone and you fill a position with somebody who's unemployed, there's a program that we can provide subsidized wages for up to like six weeks or eight weeks to kind of help offset the risk of hiring a new employee. So there are also business, services we can do to, to businesses and things like that. But as far as how we, people find out about us, right now it's probably word of mouth and we do flyers and any event that's out there, we go and, and talk and hand out information.
Well, giving you an open opportunities, this is going to replay for two weeks. Could you, by the way, restate your name for our clerk?
Sure, Jake McClelland.
And you're the manager?
Program director, yes.
Program director, okay.
One more question, Mayor.
Okay, could they first advertise themselves?
Yes, that's, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Telephone number or email site, website, something?
Yeah, telephone number is 702-367-4348 or 3674FIT. Website is www.lasvegasfit.org. And email address, you can email me directly, jake M, J-A-K-E-M, at lasvegasfit.org.
Wonderful.
And my question is separate. Do you think you could find something maybe part-time for a retired police officer, police captain with the Metropolitan Police Department? Just, you know, I know he's been out of the loop for a while, I'm just thinking, thinking ahead for the guy. Sorry, may I throw it down?
Eddie Vets, are you taking in veterans?
Oh, yeah, we, we are taking veterans and we just got a really sizable grant from Workforce Connections, so we're starting the, the first ex-offenders program, substantial ex-offenders. So we have a lot of veterans, but we have a lot of XOs and we've actually, I, I mean, I think the reason that they gave us the grant is because we started it ourselves without special money for it and we have been really successful and that's a really difficult population, but, but one that, I think we're, you know, we're, we're doing good things.
Wonderful. Congratulations. We have another item that we haven't passed yet and Councilman Barlow on item one, agenda item 115.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor, we had a lively discussion earlier today as it relates to the redevelopment agency. And this is a prime example of a, of a business, an organization that came into the redevelopment area because of the mayor and council at some point basically provided an opportunity for us to, you know, or I should say the legislature provided the city an opportunity to rid communities of blight. And so right here in the Enterprise Park where FIT sits, the beautiful building, a building that has transformed the community. And if it weren't for the RDA, we would not have been in a position to afford them the land where they are today. Not only one story, but here today going up for their second story. And I think that's a true testament to what the redevelopment area has done to really change the scope and the look of communities. And so having said that, I want to thank you once again, FIT, your entire organization and Janet, of course, you personally for the great job that you've done and continue to do to rid the community of those who are unemployed and getting them back to work as soon as possible. So for item 115, I would like to move for approval, subject to all conditions, and say congratulations to you all in advance. And please invite the entire mayor and council out to the ribbon cutting ceremony for us to celebrate the second story of FIT. Thank you.
We will do that.
Thank you. There's a motion and please vote. And please post. There's a motion and please vote and please post. Motion carries. And Janet, I do remember, I do have to tell you, I remember standing in a certain spot in our home when you called 15 years ago, I am starting a foundation.
Yeah.
And will you join in? I thought, oh my gosh, she has no idea what's ahead. Congratulations. This is awesome. How lucky you both are to be connected with us and for all that you do, it's simply fabulous.
Thank you. You know that was 15 years ago today?
No. Yes, it was. And I remember where I was standing, making Oscar a Bombay Sapphire. I promise you, right at the bar there. And did you want to make another public comment behind or you want to get touched by them? Thank you. And now we will move on to item number 116 and 117. 116, SUP 45540, special use permit for proposed beer wine cooler off-sale establishment within a proposed 2,450 square foot convenience store with a waiver to allow a 343-foot distance separation from a park where 400 feet is required. Item 117, SDR 45542, site development plan review related to SUP 45540 for a proposed 2,450 square foot convenience store. The applicant owner is James and Laurie, or are, James and Laurie Johnson. The project is located at 2051 East Sahara Avenue. Planning Commission recommends approval on both items. Staff recommends approval on item 117 and denial on 116. These items are in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin, their public hearings, which I now declare open. It's the applicant owner and would you please state your name?
Yes, ma'am, mayor and council. My name is George Rogers. I'm the architect for the project, 6325 South Jones, representing the owner.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilman Coffin, how would you like to proceed? Do we want to go into public hearing? Do you want them-
Please go to public hearing, Your Honor. We've resolved all the problems that there might have been.
Okay. Anyone wishing to make comment on these items?
Councilman Coffin just made a statement. They've all been corrected and you can move for approval, right? Pretty much?
He's not going to tell you.
Councilman? I can't make it up for you, but anyway, staff and planning, they all come to one conclusion, right? Is that what happened?
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned, thank you.
And Mr. Fatt, could you tell us on the denial on 116, what is that caused by?
Certainly. The recommendation for denial on the special use permit for the beer wine cooler off-sale was due to the fact that it doesn't meet the separation distance required from a city park. It's approximately 340 feet from a city park. The code requires 400 feet and for that reason, we had recommended denial of the special use permit. On the site plan, you'll notice that we did recommend approval of that. We feel that the landscaping that they'll be adding and improvements that they're doing to the site will be a wonderful redevelopment for that intersection.
See? Praise for you, the architect. Councilman Coffin?
Yes, Your Honor. The 116 is acceptable. Agreed, it is slightly below the distance requirement from the J.C. Levitt Park. Closer than this, though, at the opposite corner, right next to the park, is an operation essentially identical to what this is. And the, any problems in the neighborhood are not caused by the existing and I do not expect any additional problems to be caused by this new one. This is currently a gas station called Western Petroleum, but it's closed right now. So I think that the city is safe and approving. And if you would say the denial from staff would be technical in a sense, the planning commission felt that it was not substantial. And so therefore, I will go along with what the planning commission says and recommend the council approval on item 116.
Anyone else from the public wishing to be heard on these items? I'll close public hearing. And there is a motion on item number 116. Please vote and please post. Thank you. Motion carries. And item 117, Councilman?
Your Honor, I move for approval of item 117.
Thank you. On item 117, please vote and please post. Can't wait to see what you're doing.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman Coffin and the rest of the council.
Thank you. And moving on to item number 118, I would instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings in dangerous buildings or nuisance litter abatements. Okay, and now we will move on to citizen participation. Citizen participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject's on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record, please. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda? We will set the timer at three minutes, please, city clerk.
Hello, my name is Hassan Joshua Collins and I'm a public minister for the Lord Jesus Christ. And I'm just encouraging the city council, of course, and anyone listening to follow the Lord and give your life to Him if you haven't, and just to know the commands of God, sexual sin and greed leads to hell, be sober, don't curse, smoke, gamble or lie, and just choose God because, you know, there's people that are killing themselves because they didn't choose God. You know, there's people, you know, having suicides and I was just reading today in the paper in Greece, because they don't make God the focus of their life, you know? And when you let Satan take over your soul and your life in any way, he can destroy you, you know? So I just encourage people not to allow that to happen. And on Fremont Street, I was just preaching yesterday, there was a man out there and he was being pretty provocative out there and there's a lot of little kids out there. And I know under state law or city law, I should say, contributing to the delinquency of minors is actually a crime. And I know a lot of kids are out there on Fremont Street seeing this kind of thing. And this guy was doing a lot of pelvic thrusting and all this kind of stuff out there. And even people that are working there for years, that I've known for years when I'm out preaching, were like, I can't believe they don't draw the line here, you know what I mean? And just allowing whatever to happen out there. So I would just encourage maybe you guys to work on cleaning that place up out there and just not allow anything, any kind of S and M type stuff they're doing out there. I mean, there's all kinds of weird stuff of people coming out there, individuals and, you know, just promoting wickedness out there. So I know that your agenda isn't for God in a lot of ways, unfortunately, but I just encourage you to make that your agenda and vow the knee to the Lord because, you know, his wrath is real and hell is real. And no one's going to live forever, you know? You're all going to, you know, die one day and then there's going to be the judgment. And that's the most important thing is that you put God first in everything, before your family, before your money, before anything. Let's see, what else? One more thing, too. Remember that Jesus, in Luke 9:58, you know, he says, the Son of Man has no where to lay his head. Jesus was homeless too, so, you know, he chose that life to live, a simple, nomadic, homeless life, to be closer to God, of course, his Father, because he was God in the flesh. But, you know, that was his example he left in Mark chapter 6, you see, he sent his disciples out the same way. And I used to be math teacher and God told me to sell everything and travel and preach too. So I've learned that materialism can also, you know, take you away from God and destroy you. So just encourage people to free yourselves from that materialism as best you can and, you know, just put God first. You know, everything we have is from God and we should use it as God would want. This building, our clothes, you know, it's all God's stuff. So make sure you do with it what God wants because it's all His anyway. And just encourage you with that. God bless.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard under this portion of the agenda? Please state your name. That was Anthony Hodges.
Yes, ma'am, Anthony Hodges, 123 St. David. I came out west at the end of 1962, but me and my wife and two young kids, and I want to put this picture, I came out west as an electrician. Is it, can you put it on camera, please? Thank you. Okay. In 1962, it was New Year's Day, the plane dealer, you know, wrote something up about me, but it also proved that I was an electrician. So when I came out west, I was already an electrician and as the years went by, ran into Councilman Ross, you remember where I was, electrician on a 357, whatever.
Yeah, you better put your mic on, he can't hear that wonderful compliment.
Is it on? Hello?
Is that handsome young man there, you?
Well, anyway, in New Year's Day, 1960, the plane dealer wrote something up, what I'm trying to say, sometimes the media and various things can help make you see your place in history. So what I'm saying, in 1962, I had already turned out to be a five-year, you know, apprenticeship electrician. What I'm saying, when me and my wife and two babies came out west at the end of 62, headed west, okay? I came out west a full-fledged electrician, that's all I'm trying to say, on that department. But anyway, and then this is, this is also something I want to show you concerning, concerning a state of Ohio had a lot of presidents. I think it had four, if I'm not mistaken. But two of them was assassinated. And the last one was McKinsey, Kinsey or whatever you want to call it. And, well, anyway, so I brought this paper out where it said frontier of history and it said presidents assassinated. Well, believe it or not, the little paper that I showed you before, I sent that to President Kennedy before he was assassinated. I sent it to him in June, he answered me back in August and in November 22nd of the same year, he was assassinated. But anyway, I'm just saying, Ohio had four presidents. It's a great state for having presidents. They say right now, if you want to become the president of the United States, you got to have Ohio, you win Ohio, has to be one of the states you have to win, whatever. But anyway, I'm just letting you know that I've always been dealing with history. And it says, front page of history, president assassinated. That means, when I came out west and I sent President Kennedy the newspaper and the Senate Kennedy library, and sure enough, a few months, you know, he got assassinated. So I don't know if I sent it in my message-
Don't send us anything.
I don't know if it was a message or what, but all I know is, three presidents had been assassinated, from Lincoln on down, and then, and all of them was in there. See, Lincoln, Garfield, and McKinsey was in this thing that I brought out west. And then, then after that, shortly about a year or so later, he got assassinated. That's all I can say.
Thank you.
But thank you very much and-
Thank you. We love your history.
Appreciate you letting me come. Have a good day.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Ah ha, we have a prop.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Last night at the planning commission, items 20 and 21 were approved and there was, that was final action. I would like the council to consider bringing that to the full council's attention, or bringing that to the council's attention. What it was, I need, Councilwoman Tartanian remembers, but Council, Mayor Goodman, many years ago, there was a long eastern, Eastern and Bonanza, on the east side of Eastern there, that's a five-foot sidewalk. And a lady was pushing a shopping cart with a baby in the carrier thing. And there was newspaper racks or something there and the lady moved the thing and she went into a curb cut or something, the shopping cart fell and the baby was crushed by a car. And I say that because when the council heard that, and modern lawyer or not, your husband was just heartbroken. And he and Councilman Reese directed Dr. Gerbig to see if there was some way of getting those, of clearing the sidewalk of newspaper stands and that, so it never happened again. There's a, on 20 and 21, there is a proposal that they want, I don't know if you can see, but Wells Fargo wants to put, and they have an ATM in a drive, at the drive-through, at the dry cleaning place in the shopping center there. Now they want to put a standing ATM unit right next to the sidewalk there. So we're inviting ourselves into another problem. And this is Wells Fargo. Wells Fargo owned this SuperPond store right in the same shopping center. They sold that and, but at that time, they have an ATM room in the former bank building there. And they also have the drive-through things that are still there, but they're not being What I am asking for, since it was final action, I don't really know how to file an appeal in that, but I would like this heard before the entire city council. Because Wells Fargo, if, Wells Fargo has other things. In the Edminton Center, there by Bylow, they have a storefront bank that has an ATM in that. And there's plenty of places, there's lots of available space in this area that they could do the same thing here. Or they could re, they could rent some place in their former bank that they sold to SuperPond. But whatever they do, whatever they do, I don't want that to happen again. I want that traffic out of that five-foot sidewalk and, I just want the council to look at it. That's what I want. But it was final action and I want somebody from the council to say, you know-
What ward, excuse me, sir, what ward is that? Councilman Coffin's ward?
Yes, it's Councilman Coffin's ward, but he's not-
Oh, and he had to leave for a personal issue. So we will make sure that we pass, yes, Councilman Beers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just sent John up to see if Felipe is up there. Perhaps Felipe can meet with Todd and get the rundown and the brief-
Definitely. I think that's where you go, to Councilman Coffin's office. Felipe would be happy to see you.
Well, I guess I can file it with the city clerk, but I mean, you know, I just want you to-
Well, Todd, hang out for just a minute. If you, after the meeting, will you wait just a minute?
What's that?
Wait just a minute after the meeting?
Okay.
I think that means Councilman Beers or Mr. Felipe will be down to talk with you. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under this portion of the agenda? We'll move on to item 120. And so, council member recognition, comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject's on the agenda and scheduled for action. Is there any member of city council who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda? I'm going to turn right first time this time to Councilman, Mayor Protem, Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor. It's time for the Ward Four Back to School and Movie Event. It's going to be held Friday, August 17th at 6:30 PM. It's going to be held at Durango Hills YMCA at 3521 North Durango, which is basically Durango between Galen and Cheyenne. This event is going to be held indoors at the YMCA, so you don't have to worry about the 108-degree weather. The movie will be held indoors, the activities will be held indoors. There'll be free supply, school supplies while they last. The movie will be Journey to the Mysterious Island. There will be, at 6:30, we'll begin with some fun activities. There'll be a bunch of vendors there if you would like to talk to some businesses here in Las Vegas and do business with them. YMCA does a great job having fun with the young kids. They'll show the movie, there'll be, the movie is free, the popcorn's free, the water's free while the supplies last. There'll be food available for purchase or you can bring your own food. And the event is sponsored by Connections Academy. So again, this is Ward Four Back to School Movie Event, Friday, August 17th, 6:30 PM, Durango Hills YMCA. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. And Councilman Beers says he has nothing, so my feelings are hurt. Please come join Councilman Beers in his ward with me on Monday, September 10th at 8:00 AM for Coffee with the Mayor and Councilmen until 9:30 at Starbucks in Summerlin location, 990 Village Center Circle. That is again at Starbucks, 990 Village Center Circle. And please bring a little flower or something for our wonderful Councilman Beers who doesn't care about Coffee with the Mayor. So I will then move on to, having done that. So I will then move on to, having done that, no comment. Absolutely, no, you're too late moving down here to Councilwoman Tartanian.
I am but one...
You're closed off. Okay, Councilwoman?
Our next back-to-school event will be held on Thursday, August 23rd, beginning at 7:00 PM at our newly renovated Rotary Park. And I hope everybody can come. We'll have the same type of things and the same movie, Journey to Mysterious Island. And I hear there's some very interesting activities on that island. It's PG, of course. We invite all the parents to come and there'll be food and there'll also be, of course, activities on safety, shots and other fun-type activities. Thank you.
I'm not sure shots are fun, but thank you very much. Moving on to Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make sure that the community is aware that there is an RFP going out that has gone out as of today. The city of Las Vegas has issued a request for proposal for the Westside School Historic Rehabilitation Construction Manager at Risk. So if there's any contractors out there that would like to bid on this work, please contact the city of Las Vegas at lasvegassnevada.gov/business or just feel free to contact my office at 2295443. And once again, this is the city of Las Vegas, RFP proposal for the Westside, the historical Westside School in the West Las Vegas community. In addition to that, this Saturday, August 18th, I will be hosting my annual Ward 5 Back to School Fair, taking place at the Dulittle Community Center. Doors open at 9:00 AM. Parents, if you would like for your son or daughter to be immunized, please make sure you bring their shot records. The Southern Nevada Health District will be there providing free immunizations. In addition to that, I will be distributing approximately 2,500 backpacks full of school supplies to make sure that our young people return to the classroom fully equipped to be productive for this 2012-2013 school year. There will be well over 80 vendors there for additional services and providing additional supplies for the kids to go in their backpacks, but you don't want to miss it. You want to come out, Dulittle Community Center. The center is located at 1950 J Street. And so, we'll see you this weekend. Thank you. And also, let me just put this out, please go on my website for additional information as far as the Ward 5 calendar of events and that's at www.lasvegassnevada.gov/ward5. And of course, you can follow me on Facebook and Twitter. Thank you.
You're going to have your own show soon. You have so many websites and things. All right, Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Mayor. As our last item of council importance, our continuing partnership with Nevada Child Seekers, we have another missing juvenile. Her name is Brooke Etcheverrin. She's 16 years old. She is 5'3", weighs about 130 pounds, brown hair, brown eyes, has a fair complexion. Last date of contact, July 19th. Brooke was last seen in the area of South Boulder Highway and East Flamingo Road. It is unknown what Brooke was wearing last. She may be carrying a bag with her personal belongings. So if anyone has any information about the whereabouts of this young lady, please contact Nevada Child Seekers at 702-458-7009 or the Henderson Police Department at 702-267-5000. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And everyone, our next city council meeting will be held on Wednesday, September 5th here in council chambers, beginning at 9:00 AM. Thank you all and thank you staff and thank you our marshals and everybody else. Appreciate it. Thank you.